All right, let's look here. Make sure we have full complement of council. Okay. Councilman Shaw on here, looking through. Let's see if he's here or yet.
No, Councilman Shaw's not on yet.
Okay. Did he say he would be running behind, or? Anybody heard from Councilman Shaw? Okay, let's give him a couple more minutes and then we can get started with orientation. Okay, I'm pretty sure he'll be joining us soon. Just looking at. For the most part, we have a full complement of council. Just waiting on Councilman Shaw to join us in. He may be running behind. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the City Council Orientation Session for today, May the third, 2021. The time is now six oh three P M. We want to get right into the items that's on the agenda. All right. So we do have a couple of things going on. We do have a presentation. Before it's processing and trading company, they are on the line right now. They're gonna give us a presentation at the council, at the general council meeting. I don't know if anyone had any questions for them. They are on the line currently. All right. Of course, our public hearing for our budget, twenty twenty one, twenty two. This will be open to the general public. We, as a council, have had a few days of orient of budget study sessions as it relates to the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget. I know there will be some questions from council. You guys want to hold your questions for the public hearing? We can do that at that time during the general meeting, unless you have some questions right now that you had to jump into. All right, as it relates to previous business, consider an approval of the twenty twenty one budget amendments. Council wanted to jump at any questions right now or save those questions for general meeting. We can do that. Okay, hearing none. Going down into new business, item A, any questions, comments? And council. Mayor Proton, you're on mute.
I'm sorry, can he, can he go over that and explain a deficit elimination plan to some of the audience that may be on here now?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yep, and do we have, is Brian on here already?
Yes.
Now let him. There we are.
Sure, so the deficit elimination plan is required by law. It is enforced by the Michigan Department of Treasury, and so for the year ended June thirty, twenty twenty, you had two different deficits. One was in the general fund, one was in the brownfield fund. The way that the requirement is written, the brownfield doesn't actually qualify as needing a plan, and so part of the D E P is telling treasury, please reconsider, redo the calculation this way, and you will see that we don't need to file anything. It's what happened last year. They accepted it last year. They should accept it again. The general fund one is, we've talked about that several times over the last couple of weeks. The requirement, you have up to five years to get rid of the deficit. We're going to do it within one. At least that's the plan. That's what's in the draft twenty twenty two budget. And as we talked last week, when I was on the the budget discussion call on Wednesday, it's being erased by taking in the American Recovery Plan Act money and replacing lost revenue. So all that the the deficit elimination plan shows is a month by month estimate of what our revenues and expenses will be for the rest of twenty twenty one, and then the twelve months of twenty twenty two. And then presumably will be out of the deficit. So the what treasury requires is that to show that the municipality is serious, it must be officially approved by city council. So it's not enough for V J and I to put it together and then send it up to treasury. They want to make absolutely sure that council is on board. Council has approved it, and then will request of the clerk an official resolution that we can then send to the Department of Treasury. So we had thirty days to get it done. The thirty days lapsed at the end of last week, and it was just a matter of the timing with when your council meetings fall. We've already been in communication with Eric Klein at the Department of Treasury. They understand it's okay, but they're waiting for us to send this to them. So hopefully, council will find it acceptable and will approve it tonight so that we can send it out tomorrow.
Any questions from com- or comments from the council on the deficit elimination plan?
Um, ma- Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
This deficit minute elimination plan, I thought I saw in it that you were counting on those those grants we didn't get again. Is that correct, or was that another number thing I was looking at? We have so many number things this week.
It's, Councilwoman Wiley, you're right, we are, it's not that we didn't get the grants, it's that we haven't collected on them yet. So we've already been approved. The money has already been spent. The requests have been made, and it's up to the city to provide a little bit more documentation. And then for the states, the state and the feds to then turn around and give the city of Inglewood its money. So it's not that you haven't gotten the grant, it's that we haven't been reimbursed for the money the city already spent.
And do we know? Do we know what is required? I mean, because, like I said, we're in a personnel crunch right now. Who's gonna be doing all of that to make sure that, you know, we comply with the state where this is concerned?
So I just want to check, these are the F D C V T grants we're talking about, correct?
And C D B G.
And C D B G. Okay, so F D C V T, the state has everything they need. And so we're in a position of waiting to hear back from them in terms of timing and when we'll recoup the money from them. C D B G, Tracy is still working with the county, but they're in close communication, close contact. And as soon as that is finished, they said they'll be able to turn around and get our money back to us, that's about the three hundred thousand plus within thirty days.
Councilwoman Wiley, does that answer your questions?
Not really, but that's okay.
You said that it did not?
That's what I said.
What other clarification can we get, provide for you?
Because we've heard before, and I'm sorry for being, you know, the person that doesn't believe what's happening here, because this was all said before, and then we found out that we didn't get this, or that we had to pay it back, or that something else was happening. So, I mean, you all can tell me what you want to tell me.
I'm happy to share with you the emails from the state indicating that we've provided these items. It really is, it's just at this point a waiting game, but I can assure you that we've provided these to them.
And what you all need to realize is my faith in the ability of this administration to do what's necessary is not there anymore. So you tell me what you want to tell me, and I'll base my vote on what I know. Thank you.
Yeah, just for the record, this didn't happen on this administration's watch. This is stuff that was done prior to our administration taking over, so we were able to, we were able to go back with our relationships with the state and with the county to procure those funds upwards to a million dollars, so we provided everything that's needed. We're just waiting on to getting the money back. So we do have documentation as it relates to our communications with the state and with the county. But I understand when the money's there, I get it. We want to, we want to make sure that we let you know.
As soon as we get it, and everyone will know.
Okay, V J?
Yep.
Under revenues, or Brian, under revenues on page ninety, what is the licenses, license and fees? What does that consist of? Under the state share revenue, and the next, the next item is licenses and fees. Because I know we projecting that we're gonna get money April, May and June, and the total projection, one million?
That that's going to include business licenses and permits.
Okay.
And I'll have to go back and look and see what else.
Okay.
Probably cable, cable franchise fees would be included there.
I believe that's true, Brian, because I don't think we've picked up all of those so far as we would have expected.
Yeah, I think the cable franchise fees tend to run about six months late, so we may not get the cash in the door by June thirtieth, but we'll record a receivable as of the end of the year, and then we'll be collecting on those through the summer.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
In reference to the cable franchise, aren't those the enterprise funds, or no? Can't they only be used for certain things?
So the cable franchise fees come in two pieces. Number, the first piece, the majority of the money is money that is unrestricted and is just part of the general fund budget. You can use it on whatever you like. The second part, the much smaller part, is referred to as a P E G fee, P E G, and that's public education and government. So that money is restricted, and it's typically used for capital purchases related to this broadcast. So when you're in city hall, all the cameras, the wiring, the computer stuff about putting the meetings out on the public access channel, that stuff was paid for with P E G money. But the majority of the money just goes in the general fund and is part of the regular budget.
Thank you. Also, is, is there a do you have a number that maybe you can email to us that we'd be able to contact you and ask specific questions that may not be germane to what we're talking about today, but in general, or is that something different?
I would prefer, if possible, for questions to run through the mayor, and then I can address everyone at one time. I don't want to be accused of playing favorites or spending more time with one person than another. So I am happy to answer any question, but I want to make sure that that everyone is aware of those communications.
Okay, so if we just email you and email everybody else, that would be okay?
That would be fine. I'd be happy to answer to everyone.
Hey, Mayor, I have one more question for Brian. I know each month, it's gonna be a projected dollar amount under revenues and expenditures. So how will we know whether or not we are on target? Because we haven't been getting our revenue and expenditure reports. So how will we actually know? Are we gonna have a meeting every month just to make sure that we made that physical month of target?
And that's on me. I owe you guys, so that's, yeah, so I mean, I will I'll pull those tomorrow afternoon to catch us up on those and get those to you, and I'll I'll get them to you more early or suddenly.
But will we still, okay, thank you for that, but will we still have a meeting with everyone to make sure that we are on target with the deficit elimination plan?
Yeah, well, we, go ahead, I'm sorry, Brian.
I wouldn't think that, if we can get those revenue and expense reports out to you on a timely basis, I don't think we would need to meet on a monthly basis to discuss it.
Okay, okay.
But I, I'm always happy to come and speak with council whenever you would like.
Okay, so this, this, I'm sorry, Mayor, I just have one more thing, and you can speak. So this deficit elimination plan is for one year, correct?
Yeah, really fifteen months, but yes, one year, June thirty, twenty twenty two.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you, I'm done. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, not just the part two, I'm here approaching, I think, you know, as we talked about, you know, former needs, you know, committees, and with our finance committee, meeting with the treasurer and Plan Moran. I mean, you know, of course, two members of council will be able to come back and report to the council, and we can do, we can add it on each agenda just to make sure that we, you know, have a target to speak on that.
Right.
So that's, that's not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions as it relates to item A?
Oh, okay, I don't know if that, I don't know. That item A, that, that, that one, that actually manager was talking about putting into the road, road fund. That wouldn't be in this year, that would be the next year?
Right, that's the next year's budget at the same time, I'm doing public hearing, that's what we want, you know, we want to hear from the council as it relates to things that, you know, they've reviewed and looked at as we've been talking about this issue. You know, if we want to look at pulling it out, whatever, during that time, however.
Yeah, I would, I would like to make a recommendation that we hold off. And the reason why is because we got so much road problems and various things that we have to do. And to go there and put it, open up a new, a new salary, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to do at this time. You know, we need to concentrate on some of the roads that we have to do and potholes and stuff like that, that money could be used for that. So I would think we need to hold off, that we might, I know at this point, it shouldn't get hard.
And, you know, as it relates to just all of that and those comments hearing from the council and the general public as it relates to things we want to keep in the budget, take out the budget, that's the stuff that we want to hear, and then be able to bring it back to council for approval at the next, the next meeting.
I just wanted to make that note that I think that should be put on hold.
Okay, and I know that Mr. Bivens asked for it. Mr. Bivens, you want to speak to that? He's talking about your project manager.
Their project manager is not in the road budget, it's in the water fund budget, Mr. Mayor. I didn't ask for projects, asked for the water fire, and the reason is because we have several projects between two engineering firms, Gifford Webster with the sewer, Benish with the sanitary and the water, and all these projects have to be managed. Right now, they are all being managed by me, by myself. And it's unfair to the city, because when the mayor needs information, or you guys need information, it's coming directly from me over all these projects. I have right now, I have approximately fifteen projects going on that I'm managing. So I need that, and we, we talked about this in the past, and it wasn't implemented, and I'm requesting it in this budget because I need that. I need somebody to actually manage these projects, so therefore, when you guys ask for information, or the mayor asks for information, it's ready and available on the spreadsheet. You could get a quarterly report, you could get a monthly report on what's going on with these projects, so you will be up to date. And you don't come, what's wrong, what's this, what's this, what's this? It's just, it's just to help me out, and it's to help the city out better, get a better handle on all our projects. Because as the mayor could tell you, I have a ton of projects, it rose and water.
Can I say this?
You had a floor, Councilman, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I, I feel, I feel it probably is needed, but right now, we can't afford it. And I think we need to just, we just need, and then that even makes it worse when we huddle out, it's coming out the water fund. Okay, I think that we, we got serious water problems. Okay, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not frightened, I'm not, I'm not trying to say that the position is not needed, but I think we need to substitute in that position until such time that we, we can afford it, okay? We gotta look at, we gotta look at maintaining our budget, okay? We have to look at it, you know? And we're gonna, we're gonna have to tighten it up because the simple fact is, you know, if we're gonna stay operating, you know, we're just gonna have to, you know, get involved with this, this budget and make sure that that certain things we just have to hold off on, okay? I'm saying that the project manager is not needed, but I'm just saying right now, with, with our shape there, we need to put it on hold. And I, and I commend you the job that you're doing, brother Bivens, but sometimes I think you just have to hold on until such time that you can afford it.
Well, Councilman, we have no disrespect, but I have the money to afford that. I have the money. Remember, I'm the water fire, I'm the enterprise fire, so I have the money for that salary. And if you want, you could ask Brian or V J, and they can attest to that, that I have the money to cover that stuff.
Well, I'm kind of glad to know we got the money, because there's some water problems that we need to deal with. So I, you know, I'm glad to know you got some money.
But I got money for that too, sir. I'm not, I'm just not putting a project manager in the budget to put a strain on the budget. It's something that is needed, and I have the funds to cover it, plus take care other water stuff that I need to take care of, sir. I'm just not trying to say, hey, give me this position.
Well, if you, if you, if your budget that heavy, you know what I'm saying, all of the water problems that we're having there, we need to have, we need to have conversation.
That's what I'm doing. I'm addressing water issue problem, rebuilding the infrastructure, rebuilding, I'm doing a sewer rehab problem for the next fourteen years. I have twenty year projects out there. This city fell apart. It didn't fall apart overnight, and I'm not gonna be able to build it overnight. I'm just trying to put stuff in place that we have good record keeping in order. That's all I'm trying to do. I'm trying to make sure that the city has all the, if, one day I'm gonna be gone. One day I'm gonna retire, and all this information don't need to go with me. It needs to be in a record keeping system where it can be shared with other people. You know, it's, we've, we've been, we've been doing this for years. I've been here for twenty five years. And we just, we keep shuffling, but now it's time to put stuff in place so the city can progress and move forward. It's not that I'm asking for a position that's not wanted and not needed, and it's a necessity to the city. It benefits the city, don't benefit me because all your projects are now being managed. I have a project manager with Benish, I have a project manager with Giffords and Webster. Now all the projects in the city will be managed with a project manager in-house with the city to give you guys the information that you require. You know, I'm not taking away from nothing.
I, 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 I'm listening to what you're saying, but right now that I feel that as, as a policymaker, and I feel that that's something that we can put on hold right now. And if it come down after we go through our twenty twenty one, twenty two budget, and we feel like we can afford it, then I can understand that. But right now, we need, we need to put a hawk on everything, talking about any new positions or anything like that. We need to put a hold on it, I'm telling you. Okay?
Okay, the mayor can address that. I understand that from the general fund point of view. I clearly get that, but I'm talking about a fund that actually has a healthy fund balance.
Yeah, go ahead, V J.
I was gonna say, so the five ninety two budget, Councilman, like, I think you're probably looking at that tab, and you're probably seeing that, hey, it's showing that we have many more appropriations than we do revenues. And the thing to remember with that is, we don't have two of the large revenue line items in there yet. That's what we're waiting on from, from the county. So that will help offset what looks to be like a loss in this initial version of the budget. So the water fund is financially healthy from that standpoint.
So now, now you just, you just proved my point. That's something we should hold up on until we have the appropriation to do just that, okay? You see what I'm saying? Because it's in right now, it's in the budget to be approved, okay?
Well, it's not, this, the fiscal year twenty twenty two budget is not being voted on today, like, we, we still have work to do between now and two weeks from now. And this is very much where we need to have these types of discussions. And, I mean, it does need more explanation, like, this.
That's the purpose of me bringing it up, V J, right now.
Right, and that's what I'm just trying to explain, like, the, the five ninety two fund does have the ability to add that specific headcount, and I do understand where you're coming from with, you know, tightening the reins. But I, I just, I do want to, like, when we look at this, point out that there, there is no budget amount from like sewer sales consumption, because that's something where we're told the number based on what, what we're provided from Wayne County. So and, I mean, yeah.
You know, and, 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 and let me say this. Here someone say that we got a lot of appropriation of monies to take care of that, when all, when all our residents are paying these high water deals, you know, that kind of disturbing. Okay, and I'm, I'm just saying, that really disturbed me, what, what, what the director just said. Okay, you know.
What we're doing, Councilman Williams, is that we're trying to put in place a system to be able to take care of those things moving forward. So as it relates to just the infrastructure overall, and getting those things done, you know, what Mr. Bivens is asking for, I don't think is unreasonable, because you'll actually see with that person being able to manage those projects. You know, the water meters, for instance, and on the different roads and infrastructure that we need done, we'll be able to have it in a spreadsheet, run off those different projects, you know, keep track of those projects, bring them to council and all of that stuff, and you will see the savings overall. Like Mr. Bivens said, that we've been keep kicking this issue down, the, we've been kicking it, kicking the can down the road. We want to stop it now as much as we We want to stop it now as much as we possibly can. He needs that support in his department. Because if you, if you, if you, if you remember in two thousand twelve, I believe that, um, Mr. Bivens had about four divisions and, you know, upwards to fifty people, you know, now they're down to about eight people. You know, running pretty much, trying to run the same service to the city. And we've taken a toll on that, so. That's why I made it into the recommended budget for the, for the council's approval. We can continue talking about it, but we do have some other issues that we need to get to. Um, but we can talk about that, you know, in the general public, in the public hearing during the meeting, okay?
I, I, yeah, well, we need to discuss that more further because.
Okay, and that's.
Thing to say is really disturbing me, okay, and I, I, I know for a fact.
Let's wait for the general meeting if we can.
We have to deal with.
Yeah, let's wait for the general meeting and then you can bring that back up again, okay?
All right, well, you, well, you, you told me to bring it, bring it to the meeting on the budget.
That's, that's, that's right.
At this time, I think that should be removed from the budget until such time we can agree on.
Okay, I totally understand.
If you the mayor, you want to keep it in there, then that's fine, but not, you know, I think we should put it on hold.
Okay, and, and when we're not voting on it tonight, that's why we're talking about it, so it can change. And now until we bring the finalized version to, to council, and then even then it can change, so.
Councilman, just to point out, I mean, I did take notes on what you're saying here. Like, it is something that we will have additional discussions on. So it's, it's not just like sweeping it under the rug or anything.
Appreciate that.
Okay, item B. Questions, comments, concerns?
Yes, Mayor, item B is on the, uh, technical planning advisory service, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, in this, in this section, one of this agreement, um, if we find, if you are trying to find someone to replace uh, to put in that spot, I think the two-year term is kind of too much for me. I would rather see it six months to a year. Being on how the city is, uh, in financial problems, I don't want to be locked into something for two years. And you find someone within six months per se in that spot. So I mean, either we're gonna go with these people, uh, full-time and not put anyone in that spot. But even if so, I would still would like to do this on a yearly basis, six months to a year.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that, and I would say a, a year to, to start. At the same time, know that the, the, the actual idea behind this was not to keep McKinnon Associates, you know, on with us. It was because they had historical institutional knowledge about what's been going on in the planning department. And they've been with the city of Inster, um, for quite some time, and to be able to use them as, as needed basis. We do have, um, actual, we have a lot of candidates that came in for the position of city planner. And I see Chris nodding his head of some good candidates that we're looking at, possibly bringing to board, so I'm looking forward to setting up interviews, um, next week or the week after to bring in somebody in that city planner position.
Okay, so I don't want to go, now this is going out of the general fund, so this is a fun. This is something that we really have to think about, how much is it gonna be paid? Because if you find someone, you know, six months. If you find someone within two weeks, um, how long is this gonna take them to bring them up to speed? I just do not want to go over budget on this, in this line item, and then it's gonna be a budget amendment. So we really need to crack down on it, so I'm not sure which one is the cheapest, uh, because I know, do know, we did have these, uh, McKinnon Associates before, and they were running us pretty, they were high. And, um, I just don't want to see that happen.
Yes, ma'am. We definitely managing, managing that cost right, right from the offset. You know, we're, you know, it's within the salary amount that we have for, uh, the city planner as it relates to using the service for McKenna. So we want to be able to transition as quickly as possible to a city planner and not having McKenna's, McKenna's support to be able to do that.
Yeah, we might have that support, so how is the transition gonna look? Because if you're looking at candidates to hire right now and we pay McKinnon Associates, and if you hire a planner, we're gonna have two on at the same time. So how are we looking to save money in that, in that, in that budget line item under planning?
Right, so we, like, technically having two on at the same time, you, you would in turn have that full-time position that'll come on. And then we'll transition by, you know, using McKenna at an hourly rate or whatever it is to be able to condense that, that cost. So we won't have a run over in that department. We are looking to eliminate, um, the planning technician position as well in that department. Um, so, you know, we will have some monies there in that, in that department as it relates to that full-time salary being taken out. I believe it's upwards to about forty thousand. VJ, how much is, how much is the planning technician?
Technician is forty, yeah, right about forty.
Yeah, plus, plus friends' benefits, so if we needed to, you know, in turn, of course, you know, going into, we're trying to get that, that new person nearby um, the end of, you know, the end of this fiscal year, so going into the next year, you know, we'll be able to, you know, stay hold to our budget.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Uh, I just, uh, if, if it's okay, um, I, I don't think, uh, Paul's on the call too, and I don't think it would be a problem to change that to a year, if, if that would, uh, please the council. Um, I also just wanted to, uh, make sure you guys know that, that all the services listed in here are on an as-needed basis. Um, should you find someone that you think is a good fit and bring them in, um, you, you know, and, and you don't need our services at that point, uh, you won't, you won't be paying us a monthly fee for, for anything that we're not doing. Uh, everything is spelled out, uh, just for the reviews we actually complete, for the office hours we complete. And for miscellaneous tasks, tasks that council or the mayor ask us to complete. And so as you transition to a full-time planner, uh, you, you shouldn't have, uh, though there may be some crossover training that we help with, it, you know, we would only be there for as-needed services.
Great, thank you, Chris.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Cosman Shaw.
Uh, I just didn't see in the agreement, the termination, where we can terminate. Because I, I am in agreement with Mayor Pro Tim that we should go about a year with the, with the, with the contract, but I don't see the termination. Can we terminate the contract? Uh, do we have to give a reason for the termination?
It's actually, it speaks to it in, uh, section one of the agreement.
I know it says ninety days, it says ninety-day notice, but do we have to have a reason once we terminate? And what would be the reason that they will go for? Because sometimes it gets a little tricky, you know, with, with the terminating the contract.
Yeah, and I want to make sure that we're clear too, um, again, McKenna and Associates, we won't be utilizing them on them. They won't be receiving just a monthly fee or anything like that as it relates to the contract. It's all as needed, so, um, i- if you want some additional language in there as it relates to being able to terminate without, you know, without, without cause, we can do that.
Okay, I mean, I, I would definitely be comfortable with that because, uh, we don't want to get too sticky with it.
Yep, totally agree.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, I just wanted to confirm that the agreement can be terminated for any reason. Um, and as Chris said, I think he said very well, this is all at-will services, so only things that the city needs us for will we bill anyway. For the contract period, well, it's limited to a year, or it can be limited to a year. I would say in your motion, just say, rather than expiring on May fifteen, twenty twenty-three, it would be May fifteen, twenty twenty-two. Um, and, um, I, I don't think you need to modify anything to say that it can be terminated for any reason, but it can be, and if you wanted to add this agreement, maybe terminated comma, for any reason, comma, by either, uh, party. Um, I think that is also fine. Um, so, just wanted to say that that is a fine substitution to make.
Okay, so to make her the motion, let's add those two things, the, the year and then the clause, Cosman Shaw. If you're fine with that.
I'm fine with it.
Any other questions, comments, concerns on item B?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm, um, I was looking at the fee schedule and there's nothing there that says consultant in the fee schedule. But it does say the consultant is, uh, paid uh, six hundred and seventy-five dollars a day. Reference, uh, whatever he does, an eight-hour period is six hundred and seventy-five dollars, and then a half day is three hundred and something. I don't have it in front of me now, so, uh, what my question is, is if he's working on, if he has a day to work and we paid him six hundred and seventy-five dollars, and it happens to be a day where he needs to attend a planning meeting, does it, this contract address overtime? Or anything of that nature?
New Paul, can you answer that question, please, or speak to what she's beginning?
Yeah, there's, there's no overtime. Um, the section C compensation, uh, for services under section.
I don't know why that works.
For the off, the office hours, um, is just for the, that specifically refers to the time that, um, a planner is onsite in office hours.
Okay, so there is no additional funding or additional monies needed if they attend the planning commission meeting?
Uh, no, I think that the planning commission meeting would be an hourly, would be billed hourly. Planning commission meetings will be invoiced hourly for attending the, the planning commission meetings.
Okay, so, um, since there's no hourly wage there for consultant per se, which one of those, um, items do we classify the person who's attending that meeting in?
And, uh, that's a good question. So under section eight compensation A are the hourly rates for McKenna, um, professionals, so, um, Chris, uh, you bill?
Yeah, so I am at the associate level in the firm, um, so that is, that is the hourly rate that would bill for a meeting.
Okay.
What's that cost, Chris? What's the number?
I believe.
Public can hear it, there's some folks that don't have.
It's ninety dollars an hour.
Okay, thank you. Also, just one other thing, Mayor, as long as you're doing corrections on there, could you please change city manager to mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
It still says city manager and things of that nature, so.
Yes, ma'am, we have it.
There's several places in there that it happens, so if whoever's doing this could make sure they go and correct all the sections that have that.
Yes, ma'am. Paul, when you send that back to us with the revisions, make sure that we do that.
And I think that's it for now.
All right, any other comments, questions, concerns, item B? Item C? Questions, comments? Concerns? Item C? Item D?
But item C, um, do we have uh, the assessors' dollar amount or what this property will cost if, because this is on prime land? And five hundred is too steep. I know we do that within our neighborhoods, but prime property that's sitting on a thoroughfare of beach daily. I think that's kind of low for, for me, but I would like the assessor to at least come up to find, you know, to find out what would it cost if we put a business there? Um, and is the whole lot, is, is it gonna be between Yale and Norfolk? The whole block? Because on here it's got, uh, vacant, one vacant lot. But how many lots is she's trying to buy? Are they trying to buy the whole from Yale to Norfolk?
Yeah, it's in between Yale and Norfolk, and it's just one, one of the lots between Yale and. No, it's just.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't.
I'm, I'm sorry, it's, uh, one of the lots, she's looking to build a home on it.
Right, but, so how, I mean, one lot? Is this, this one, is one partial, it's not the whole block?
Right, no, ma'am, it's not the whole block, it's just one parcel.
Okay, is there a way that we can, um, get a dollar amount on what would they charge for one partial? Because it's on beach daily?
Yeah, we can definitely get that information back to you. I know that we have been talking about, you know, the council as a whole, um, raising those, raising those fees from, you know, two fifty for a single lot and five hundred for a buildable lot. Um, so we definitely can do that as it relates to that information and get that information back to you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thanks.
Okay, item D? Any questions on item D? Comments? Item E?
Chair, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, uh, on, on item D?
Yes.
I do have a question on that. Now, is this, uh, introductory, introductory rate? Or is this gonna be something that's gonna be, uh, uh, permanent? I'm trying to get my question right, but.
It's not a permanent rate, um, it's not necessarily like an introductory rate where they're just discounting it for one year either though. Um, it's, uh, there is an eight thousand dollar credit for, uh, if we do move from priority health to half. That's the only part that's considered introductory though.
So it's also to, VJ, talk about the cost savings though, that we would give for priority to have.
And I'm gonna, uh, uh, unmute Kimberly as well on here, um, just in case we get further. Troy, would you be able to help me find, uh, Kimberly?
Good after, good evening, everyone.
Okay, um, so, uh, very quickly, what we did here was, uh, Sue took the lead on this and she's been working with Matt Vance and trying to determine, uh, what good options, you know, what's our best option for employee, employee benefit plans for the upcoming fiscal year? Um, Priority Health initially provided us with a, uh, a three percent increase on their prices. So Sue worked with, uh, Kimberly here and Nick with Vance went back and they got us a whole host of, uh, prices uh, from, uh, half, uh, Priority Health and Blue Cross. And we also did explore Mesa as well. We, we've spoken with another broker. And based on what, uh, Kimberly and her team were able to provide back to us, it made the most sense to us to, uh, suggest that we move to half as our carrier because it would result in cost savings of fifty-eight thousand uh, at the base level plus an additional eight thousand credit. So that's sixty-six thousand in savings for the same level of coverage as we had before. Um, Blue Cross Blue Shield did offer a larger savings, but it came with a very reduced level of coverage and something that was not as beneficial to employees.
Okay, uh, so when will we expect to have those savings in the next fiscal year budget?
Yep, so the, uh, open enrollment would be, if I'm not mistaken, the latter half of this month.
Was it June first?
And then June first would be the renewal, the actual beginning.
So we would get that eight thousand dollar credit right away though, right, VJ, in this fiscal year in June?
It would.
Yeah.
It would probably show up, um, I believe it would show up on the July invoice, so you'd be paying, uh, premiums for June because it would be effective June first, and the eight thousand dollar, uh, invoice credit would come in July.
Okay, so that would carry us into our next fiscal year, Councilman Shaw, with a complete savings of sixty-six thousand. And that's to the general fund, right, VJ?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no, there's no, this is go, go, go all into the general fund, not a specific line item with the insurance carry. With the insurance carrier.
Right, it's just, yeah, it's spread across the employees.
Yeah, I seen the sixty-six thousand and then the fourteen thousand on the next one here.
Yep, so the, would it be okay to move on to the next?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead, please.
Yep. So similarly, uh Sue worked with Manfred Vance and we, we got uh more options for our uh long-term disability. And let me get to that page real quick. Um, and yeah, so what we have here is we're currently with uh the standard. And to get the same level of coverage with the Hartford, it would be a fourteen thousand dollar decrease. Um, and another thing that we made sure of when we were speaking with Mick and Vance is, you know. How does it affect the employees, right? Um, so there won't be anything that uh would make it more difficult or anything like that. It should be a seamless transition from one of these carriers to another. But we'd get the same level of coverage and we'd be able to, in total, between these two, save around eighty thousand dollars.
Yes, I've seen that there would, wouldn't be a change in really how they do business. Now, now, these are not preliminary, right? There's no, you know, as we get through the year. And then they, you know, because insurances are good, I'm not going to say all insurances are good for that to that bait and switch type of thing.
Kimberly, answer that question or speak to that, please.
So the rates of, well, let's start with the life and disability first because that's, that's a more constant rate. So as you see in the um spreadsheet that we provided, there's a two-year rate guarantee on that cost savings. So you would collectively save over your current costs that you pay with the standard. You would save fourteen thousand dollars each year for this upcoming year and then the second year. So it wouldn't be up for renewal for two years. It would be rate guaranteed for that period. Um, with the medical insurance plan, what happens with medical insurance, just like today with your priority health plan? You would see a renewal next year for June first. So we would go through the renewal process next year. We wouldn't be negotiating whether it's with. Um, with HEP, we'd be negotiating that renewal based on the premiums paid and the claims paid, making sure that you're receiving a fair renewal. And in addition, we would be able to then go back to the marketplace if necessary, obtain optional quotes. Um, if that's what the city wished to do, but those rates are guaranteed for twelve months. So those rates would be guaranteed from June first through May thirtieth or thirty-first of next year.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other comments, questions as it relates to those two items? Okay, and then item F, DM payroll. Any questions, comments? Concerns, changes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Chisholm.
On, I know it says on the agenda, um. Approval should be contingent on legal approval. Has legal had an opportunity to review the contract yet?
Legal has. I think they have some feedback. Um. And is David on here?
I was just wondering about that and then I was wondering, I didn't, I, maybe I overlooked it. I was just wondering if an opt-out clause is on there as well. I see the contract is for uh to expire in a couple of years.
So it was, and the reason it was a three-year contract is because I requested it almost like just kind of considering a rate lock of sorts. Um, but yeah, like uh, and Brandon, I know that you know this contract much better than I. But uh if you look at the point seven, it's uh the section seven. It says this agreement may be terminated by either party upon thirty days written notice to the other. So that's really where uh we have that opt-out if we need it, like even though it is a three-year uh clause.
All right, attorney Jones is on the line too, uh, Cosman Chisholm.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I saw the savings and everything and I was cool with it, but I know we always. Heart-boned businesses hiring Inkster and we're kind of tracking stuff out. It's saving the city in one sense. But we're doing completely opposite of what we ask business owners to do. So.
Right, the thing that I didn't share in this is. A likely, the, the state is likely going to help us cover at least the next four or five months of this. And they're seeking council's approval on it. Um, and the reason they're, they're wanting to cover up through uh September thirtieth. And then that's their fiscal year and we can inquire again in October for them to help cover it as well. So for, for us, I kind of saw it as a uh a win-win because it takes this off the plate of employees. Not just payroll, but certainly the HR uh items. And it's being uh covered by the state and then it also frees up, you know, time for our current employees, so.
Question for you too, with the state reimbursement sake, just because of how the grants and reimbursements always have their own little verbiage in it. If we did, um, say we approve this tonight and we move forward with it. And then the state says, okay, we're gonna reimburse you for those couple of months. Um, do they reimburse you monthly? Is it one big chunk? Because I, the reason I asked was, say, three months down the line, we decide to hire someone and place in that position. And opt out of the contract itself. Uh, do we then just submit that three-month invoice to the state? Or is it something like, well, you're gonna have to pay it all back now? I was just curious if you knew about that.
Um, what they do is as we make a payment, um, we send the invoice and the payment to the state. And they reimburse us for that amount each, each time we make a payment. So there wouldn't be any amount to pay them back. Um, their consideration, when I, uh, Sue and I were talking with them about this. Is really just to ensure that uh we're able to transition payroll properly. Um, so that's where they got involved and were like, hey, we can help on this.
Okay, thank you. Um, Attorney Jones can, I guess, address the legal review uh question or inquiry.
Yes, there, there was, we have reviewed it and there was just two minor changes. One was, I wanted to discuss with the drafter, the vendor, uh, including our typical arbitration clause. Um, it did call for thirty, thirty-day out, um, but we just had a little tweak to that as well. But we did review it and have input and waiting to connect with the vendor.
Okay, and then Brandon, um. I know you're not the person necessarily drafted this, um, but what we can do is we'll have David. Connect with you so that he can get in touch with the appropriate people, the um, to uh address those items.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
Cool, thank you.
Councilman Shaw, you were trying to chime in?
Yeah, just with the, with the payment or the reimbursement, this should be also on your um, your check registry. That you would be supplying to the council on a monthly basis, correct?
Yep, once we cut that, um, it'll be on that. And, and like I said, I dropped the ball on getting that to you guys uh in timely fashion.
Okay, no worries, no worries. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we had a couple of minutes left, so Brandon, when we get to the general um meeting to this item. I would like for you to just speak on exactly, um. Outside of payroll with some other functions that you'll be bringing um to us as well. So I'm gonna get a council uh five minutes before we go off into general session. Unless there's any other questions or comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just have three right quick. I'd like to know the ownership of this uh company and how long they've been in business. And did we run them through the Better Business Bureau or anything of that nature?
So like, high level, what I'll say is they are a division of Doran Mayhew. Which for many years was, if I'm not mistaken, the largest CPA, a single. A CPA firm in the US. So I mean, they're, they're well-known from that standpoint. Um, and Brandon, I think, can give you much more detail. I don't know, Mayor, if you want. That to wait for the next session or if you, if it's okay for right now.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a council a break, but at the same time, I want to respect Councilwoman Wiley's question.
Fine, if you wanna wait, it's fine if you wanna wait until the next session, just as long as the questions are answered. I don't think the answers will change between now and seven.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, guys, we'll come back and convene and start the meeting as closely on time as possible. Take off five minutes if you like. Thanks, Vijay. Thanks, Brandon. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the Eastern City Council, our general session for May the third, twenty twenty-one. The time is now seven five PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Um, after. The Pledge of Allegiance, we have the Honorable Pastor New Hope Baptist Church. Virgil Humes on the line and he will be bringing us prayer tonight. So Pastor Humes. Right after the Pledge of Allegiance, if you could lead us in a word of prayer for our meeting tonight. All rise. Let's pledge allegiance to the flag. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation. Indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Pastor Hughes, prayer, please? We can make sure he's off mute, please.
Can, can you, can you hear me, Mayor?
Mayor? No, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. God bless you and thank you for the invitation. Let us pray. Dear wise and loving God, we commit this meeting to you and ask for a spirit of unity and great outcomes from today's agenda. We thank you on behalf of all who are remotely gathered here today. We thank you for your many and abundant blessings that we will enjoy this day and the days to come according to your will. We pray, God, that you will be a spiritual covering about the city of Inkster and the community at large. To safeguard, protect, and to maintain safety and wellness for all of its citizens. We pray for the mayor, Mayor Wimberly, and for the various levels of city officials. And especially for the assembled council today, that they make good decisions and govern. For the safety and prosperity of this great city of Inkster. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and in your love. In the name of our Lord and our Savior, Jesus of Christ, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Hughes. City Clerk, roll call, please.
God bless you.
Mayor Wimberly?
Here remotely from City Hall in the city of Inkster.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Mayor Protim, you're on mute.
Here remotely from my home in the city of Inkster.
Councilwoman Wiley?
Yes, present, attending remotely from my home in the city of Inkster. Uh, Michigan. I'm sorry, County Wayne.
Councilwoman Washington?
Present in my home in the city of Inkster in the County of Wayne.
Councilman Chisholm?
Present here in my home in Inkster, Michigan, County Wayne.
And Councilman Shaw?
I'm here in the city of Inkster.
Mayor, we have seven present tonight and we do have a corner.
All right, get you to approve of the agenda?
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Support? Been moved and properly supported. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Howard?
She's back on.
Mayor Protim Howard? Yes. Okay, Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
And Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor, we have seven yays.
All right. Agenda is approved and moving right along. Before we get off into presentations, the chair would like to recognize our honorable Congressman Rashida Tlaib. She's on the line tonight. Um, so at this time, I yield a floor.
No, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mayor. I really appreciate uh your really great partnership and your consistent responsiveness. I don't always get that from all my mayors, but you especially, uh, if you can't get back to me, at least text and let me know. Uh, that you're still working on various projects, especially because we're now through the appropriations process. But blessings to all of you, uh, my wonderful, beautiful city of Inkster. Uh, I'm of course here as well in Detroit. We're heading back to Washington DC next week. But I wanted to report back to all of you. I, I know there's been a lot of confusion and I apologize for it. I personally told the mayor, uh, you know, we're continuing to ask for clarification. In regards to how much in the American Rescue Plan is going to the city of Inkster. And the March estimates are still at two point four million dollars. Uh, we again are uh signed on to letters because we're very concerned about any um changes to the formula. That would reduce uh funds to the city of Inkster uh directly or significantly. And so we're working really hard. I'm, I'm joined with a number of my colleagues that really want to make sure local, smaller communities. Who continue to be obviously left out in the past to try to combat and crush this virus. Um, also, I wanted to report back to you all, um, again with, you know, the uh responsiveness from your mayor. And really, uh, just talking to many of the city council members and others. Uh, I was able to submit, and again, very highly competitive, but are a community project for our senior center in Inkster. That has been successfully submitted as one of my top ten uh submissions uh on behalf of the city of Inkster. I know it's uh, it's far from uh the cost that's going up, but it's gonna make a significant dent if the appropriations committee uh supports it. And I'll continue to work with our uh U- United States Senators, Stavon and um Peters. And any help, city council members, as well as uh Mayor Wimberly, any help in that way of making sure that those senators knows. That this is a priority project for the city of Inkster and for them to make sure that it gets through the Senate um a- as well. Uh, other really important um initiative is. They now put forward uh being able to re- do resurfacing. So I know local roads is really important. Um, we worked with SEMCOG and the MDOT, Michigan Department of Transportation, to see which program, which um roads are already approved. So shovel-ready. And so we did put a request uh for resurfacing of the Inkster uh road bridge. Uh, this is something that again uh is much needed in the city of Inkster. So I want to report on that. And for all my city council members, especially that are in the community consistently, I see all of you and I thank you for that. Um, please know that our office is working with families that have lost loved ones to get the funeral assistance through FEMA. Uh, we also got an additional five hundred million dollars on top of the six hundred thirty-eight million dollars for past due water bills. And again, please let residents know, don't wait until you get that shut-off notice because everything's kind of on hold right now because of the pandemic. To now seek out that money and we're working with Wayne Metro Community Action Agency to pay the back bills. Uh, that you might owe because of the pandemic loss and rep, you know, income in your home. This is the time to seek that money out. I don't want that money to run out and Inkster residents not be able to access it. On top of that, please know that there is also money for about forty billion that was in American Rescue Plan. Um, for rent, utility assistance and food. Uh, and so many of our young people already got uh some debit cards in the mail. Uh, that brought allow the family to get access to uh food assistance and that's really wonderful. Want to make sure that also our residents who have um passed due rent. Again, don't wait until you get evicted and for the housing moratorium to end. You do this now. Uh, don't wait last minute again where everybody will be going to Wayne Metro and many of these agencies that uh have thought, got the money, the federal dollars. To be able to prevent your eviction. So please, um, for all the residents, be proactive. You may not need this resources from the funeral assistance, the water, to the rent. Uh, even help getting those survival checks of the fourteen hundred dollars. But you may know somebody that does. I know many of you those listening in and being engaged as city council are my choir, my ambassadors in city of Inkster. But you all know loved ones, neighbors, community members that need this information, so please do share that. Um, I think that's it. Uh, you know, just uh, Mayor knows, I also submitted a project that impacts Detroit, but also Inkster. Uh, it's a program called Prosper Us. I think I've said it right. Larissa always says it. But it's really wonderful. One of the things that I want to do is help the Michigan corridor, uh, Michigan Avenue corridor. And so this would be micro lending to uh, you know, small mom and pop shops, uh, some of our folks. And they primarily help especially um uh communities of color uh to start up local businesses. So that is another request that I'm hoping to get uh through appropriations process as well. But just wanted to report back to you all. And again, Mayor, thank you for being responsive and to all my city council members who reach out all the time, asking questions. Thank you for that because it makes me know, you know, it helps me know what our priorities in our, in our city. With that, uh, Mayor, I'll open up to any questions. With that, uh, Mayor, I'll open up to any questions for any of our council members, or they can always follow up with my office.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, you know, thank you, Congresswomen, for all that you do for our community and fighting for us in thirteen congressional district and continue to do a great job.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate your text messages, and you're consistently on the community, and I love to be able to always, uh, have your ears and eyes on the ground, and I appreciate you always including me.
Anyone else? Well, again, Congresswoman, you, I'm just echo, uh, Councilwoman Washington, just thank you so much for being a true advocate for Inglewood and not just saying the words, but, you know, being responsive to us anytime that we call you, anything that we need from you or your office. Um, your staffers are amazing, so we really appreciate all that you do for us here in the city of Inglewood. You keep up the great work, keep up the fight, and know that Inglewood's behind you.
No, thank you all. Your passion really is contagious. It really makes, uh, my team and I work even harder. I appreciate all of you. Thank you for the time, Mayor.
You're welcome.
And council members, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, let's jump right off into, uh, presentation. I believe that, uh, we have the company on the line, Trading Company. Um, hey, Brian, how are you, sir?
Good. How are you, Mayor?
Doing really well. So before you get off, you wanna, you wanna, you need share capability to get off into your presentation for us?
So I'm hoping, uh, we, we submitted the, uh, the PowerPoint thing, and I, I hope your IT person can pull that up for us, or, or is it, uh, is that, will that be the best way to run it?
I hear some other, somebody else in the background speaking of Steve, or for you guys can take care of that. Um, yeah, so I know, uh, City Clerk, that, um, they sent the information to you. Can you send that over to Troy and then Troy, if you can cue that up for us?
I sent it to Troy already. He should have it. Sent it a few days ago.
All right, Troy, can you cue that up for us, please?
If there's having any technical issues, if, uh, you forward it to me, I can put it up if needed.
Okay. So you clerk, can you forward it over to Councilman Chisholm for us, please? Thank you. Brian, while we're waiting, just give us a little bit of history.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, with me tonight, we have, uh, Dee Simpson, uh, Steve Benacristo, and Lisa Carroll as well from Ferris. There it is. And I'm gonna certainly, um, obviously be watching your study session, realize you guys have a lot going on with budgets, so we're not going to take a lot of your time tonight. I'm Brian Ammon, uh, behalf of Suave Company, which owns Ferris Processing. And, uh, we're gonna, um, we provided this, uh, presentation, and I'm, I'm gonna save you some time. I'm gonna take it right through pages one through seven pretty quickly to say that when you see these pages in detail, they'll explain that we are a one of the nation's leading recycling companies operating, taking scrap yards and really turning them into recycling centers. And we are, uh, we service the big three, we service other companies. We're in twenty-five locations. We're a Detroit-based company. Uh, we very much appreciate, uh, the importance of this project, Inglewood, uh, with, to Inglewood. We've worked with Caitlin and the mayor on this. He also, the mayor, let us know of the previous owner's involvement in community activities and those kinds of things, and we certainly look forward to that. So with that, I'm gonna, uh, if you could, for the sake of time, we'll just move over to page, uh, seven. Well, just, this shows some of our businesses, real estate and those kinds of things. You can move right to page eight, and we'll let, uh, Steve jump into the description of the site. And, uh, that way you'll, uh, get to see kind of specifically what we're doing here as it relates to the reap, as to the purposing of this site, uh, as to how we intend to, uh, do it. We are before you on a business license, uh, to the change of the new business, Ferris Processing, taking it from the previous owner. And so one more page, uh, two, yeah, and then I think we're gonna get to the site, and then Steve will take over from there.
And Brian, if you could, um, also too, just for the general public, um, as it relates to the actual, the old business that you're taking over, we all know it is H and H Metals.
Right. H and H Metals on Michigan Avenue, and, and we're really, um, you know, we're there pursuant to their use, and, and what you're gonna find is I'll just kind of bottom-line it. H and H, I think, was a company that was doing their best to do what they could. Uh, Suave, which owns Ferris Processing, and Ferris Processing is a national leader as it relates to safety, as it relates to adherence of restrictions and rules and guidelines. The state has actually used some of our programs to develop some of their, um, techniques throughout Michigan and, and some of their regulations. And so here you see our various locations around the country and, and also in Canada and Mexico. Uh, and, uh, we are so excited to add Inglewood to that. We are an employer. We love to hire people from the locality. So if you have people from Inglewood who are interested in, uh, coming in and applying for a job, we're very much interested. I think everybody's looking for great employees right now anyway. So, uh, but, uh, with that, uh, let me see, I think, uh, I'll get to Steve, and then we'll take any questions. He's gonna kind of walk through how we intend to use this site, clean it up, fix it up, essentially improve on what's been there before, and I think it'll, it'll be a, a great outcome for the community.
Uh, Mayor, Steve Benacristo, Council, Steve Benacristo, Ferris Processing. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Steve.
Okay, thank you. Uh, like Brian was saying, Ferris is a large corporation. We shred roughly, we're not shred, we process about two hundred and twenty thousand ton of scrap a month throughout all our corporation, uh, companies across the states. Uh, the company H and H, we dealt with them for years. Uh, David Guss, who knew him for a long time. I've known him actually for thirty-some years, newest father. Uh, it's a great company. They did a great job, but I think Ferris can take it a little further, do a little more cementing, uh, as I don't know if anybody's gone up and down Michigan Avenue since we've taken over. Uh, I don't think the dust, the track out is out there like it was before. Uh, some of the trucks that were coming in and out of Ferris, uh, H and H, we've moved to other locations just because of logistically, it made sense. We're hoping to clean up the site a little more, uh, get some concrete laid down, put in some oil-water separators, and recycle a little bit more and take care of the city like we've always done with all the other cities we've dealt with. Um, I know we are on a tight, you know, timeframe here. Um, I, I don't know if I have access to moving through the screens, or I'm, I'm not very good at this, sorry. So, um, does the council have questions for us, or? I'm trying to move through these screens. I don't know how to do this. I'm sorry.
I had a quick question. This is, uh, Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
You stated, uh, about hiring, um, Inglewood residents. How many employees will be, um, with your company?
We are looking right now, the site is, we have twenty to thirty at this site right now. We're looking to hire five or six currently at this site. But we also, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Washington, we are looking our other sites in Detroit also, which right at Michigan Illinois, which isn't too far up the road. Uh, we're looking to hire ten, fifteen people right now. And we're not just talking labor. So we, a lot of people start off as labors, but they work their way up to crane operators, uh, scale people, that, that they can, there's a process to work right up to higher-paying jobs. We're talking from sixteen to twenty dollar an hour jobs with full benefits, 401Ks and everything. Oh, there you go. I'm, I'm sorry, I'd comment right now. Um, as Brian suggested, said earlier, a lot of the state rules for, uh, decommissioning cars, we helped with. The mercury sponges are out, the batteries are out, we drain all the fluids. And what we will do at this site is when we do this, we will, uh, crush the cars. But we, before they leave the site, they'll be all economic. They'll be drained of everything they're supposed to and, uh, you know, taken care of the right way. All the free ons out, so.
And as it relates to the jobs, Councilwoman Washington, that was one of the first things that we talked about, um, when I met with, with, with Ferris about, uh, two months ago now. And I've said several people by there already, and they have been employed. So they're, they're already keeping their word as it relates to that. And then, as you talked about, just the, the dust and
Yes.
Concrete throughout, you know, the whole space, as you can see, are ready, the, the space is being cleaned up. We don't have all those issues. Yes, go ahead, Councilman Shaw.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's one of the questions that we, we had down through the years, is how, how the, the, um, the dust of the trucks coming out from Michigan Avenue. Um, is it going to be scheduled for something regular that we can, we can keep track of to know that, you know, it's being done and, you know, just not just saying, okay, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do it. We're gonna clean up Michigan Avenue. Um, you know, and we're gonna do it regularly, but is there going to be some type of schedule that we can even look at to, you know, make sure that, that that's getting, getting done? Yes, Councilman Shaw. We do have our own street cleaner that we come through with, but right now I can't take it, um, my lowboy that could, that transports it. So we've hired, um, industrial maintenance services. We're, I believe they're a Dearborn company to come through, uh, once a week to start doing this. And so I could show you invoices or however you want to do it. But, uh, the other thing is, as you've noticed, the trucks that used to go in there, they, they brought a lot of scrap from all over metro Detroit. I'm gonna say probably fifty to sixty percent of those trucks that would go in there are going to other locations across Detroit. And that's good because that'd stop the flow and stop the dust. And then also that alludes to my, my next question about the, um, scrap itself. You know, we, you know, those who were, were over there in that area, uh, were concerned about the height of, of the scrap. You know, it'd be like stories, like, you know, two-story buildings almost where you can see the scrap from, you know, uh, let's say, off of Middle Belt, almost from, you know, E, uh, Carlisle. Uh, I know you're not familiar with the streets, but No, I understand where they're at. You know, and it was just so high, you know?
Right.
You can just see it. Now, is that going to be maintained? Um, is it going to be brought lower, or is it going to be maintained from, from a, a standard height and not just be like two? Great, great question. Uh, so H and H, like I said, I've known them for years, but they, they were not really processors. They bought and sold scrap, so they would sell to a company like ours. So their goal was to stack it up, wait until the markets turned, and then sell it. Okay? Ferris Processing, like I, I mentioned, we sold, we sell roughly two hundred and twenty thousand ton a month of processed scrap. So that scrap, it doesn't pay for us to have it sit around. We don't play the market. We're in there, we're processing this car, this flattener, you see right there, uh, the carload of, uh, cars right there on the screen. That will go into strong steel in over at, uh, ninety-four and seventy-five area. And that will be processed within, that, that load would take us about fifteen minutes to shred and reduce it to nothing. So our goal is not to keep scrap on that site. Our goal is to get scrap, buy it, and get it off it. Yeah, I, I did see, seeing you right up there, that, that, these are the things that you're talking about. Now, also with the moving out of those trucks, now there's a, I think you alluded to the cement work. There, there's, you know, those are heavy, heavy trucks that is going up and down, uh, you know, from out of that facility. Now, how is that going to be maintained there? Well, the, the trucks go out with legal weights. I mean, we don't ship illegal weights off. Okay. Okay, now, is there, is there a timeframe in which these trucks do go out so they won't be impeding any additional traffic there? Uh, it's normal business hours. Okay. Okay, um, I'm, I'm not gonna be going out at one o'clock in the morning and stuff like that. We won't be bothering the neighborhood like that. It's just, you know, normal eight to five kind of business hours. Now, now, my last question would be, uh, the greenery. Now, how are you going to, uh, improve on the greenery? Uh, um, you know, for sprinkler systems and making this facility look, um, you know, really presentable? Yeah, aesthetically, we want it looking good for Michigan. We can plant shrubs and whatever we need, uh, whatever the council or your permitting asks for, we can do that along Michigan Avenue, no problem, you know?
And the mayor has let us know, obviously, of the importance of the new plans of the whole Cavanaugh of Ann Arbor to Detroit and the importance Inglewood views. And so we certainly look to be a productive part of that and the beautification of Michigan Avenue and how we can improve our site to make sure we meet with the city's plans and all those, all those regards.
Councilman Shaw, you could see on the screen right now, the, you know, we will have the proper stormwater permitting. We have, uh, Dee, Dee Simpson's on the phone right now, on this meeting right now. She's in charge of that, her and Lisa Carroll. We'll, we'll put oil-water separators in, so anything that, there's no leakage out. Um, I lost that screen, sorry. No, I seen it, I seen it in your writer. We do have it in our packet, and I, you know, those are some of the questions that I did had, and I wanted you to kind of bring them out. Yeah, we will do the regular street sweeping and the, uh, additional paved surfaces, surfaces in the yard. It's not as dusty inside the yard. Um, and also, I just want to encourage, uh, your, your corporation to, we do have an Inglewood Chamber of Commerce here, and I'm sure that the mayor talked about it, but I do want to encourage you, and, and I want you to be committed to, to our Inglewood Chamber of Commerce. Yes. And my last question is to, to the chair, you know, there, there's not a lot that we can do with this site, correct?
No, not, not at all.
Yeah. So due to the
Themselves into that.
Yes, due to the contamination of that site there.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead. Mayor, Mayor Protim Howard first, and then Mayor, uh, sorry, Councilwoman.
Okay, you said the, uh, previous, uh, H and Metals, they brought and sold scrap. Now, have this went through our site planning and our engineers? Because there's a new company coming in?
We, uh, this is Brian Ammon, the council, if I may, Mayor, respond to that. We are, uh, currently coming under the licensing, and when we intend to make any changes on the site that would trigger your site plan, we will certainly be coming through a site plan process as it relates to structures or those kinds of things, uh, we'll, we anticipate we'll be coming through the city site plan process for that kind of a process. Right now, we're just on the license.
Okay, okay. So, okay, because I'm looking at the batteries and the water, uh, a washer fluid and freeze oil, where would those be put once it's drained out of the car?
We drain that into tanks, and then the tanks are, we bring companies in and pump out the tanks.
Yeah, and those activities, those activities have been going on for some time. We're coming in, bringing in the best practices to make sure they're being done not only, uh, to meet state law, but to exceed state law, uh, because it's not only the right thing to do, but it's the best thing for the site. But, uh, those have been ongoing for some time. Yes, prior to us owning it.
Okay, but yeah, I mean, okay. And what I'm, what I'm saying here, um, you guys already are at the property as of right now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I don't understand how was that able to do? How was it able to happen without us going through our site plan first?
To, uh, to take ownership of the site, uh, essentially, we are, we're not, we didn't, we aren't doing anything physically that changes, that triggers the actual amendment of a site plan. And, and we are planning to come through and actually want to talk about some structures and those things. Uh, first, we have to get our license to operate lined up. Once we do that, then we want to come and initiate the conversation about the amendments to the site plan that would trigger that process. We haven't triggered that process yet with the kinds of things that would cause it under your ordinance. But we, we do plan to because we want to come in and show you the entirety of the proposal, and you will have your input, and you'll, you guys will be saying, yeah, we like this, we don't like this. You'll have the appropriate process on site plan as we come in to propose specific elements on the site that would trigger the ordinance, or trigger site plan approval.
All right, that's it.
All right, Councilman Williams?
I would, I'd just like to, first of all, wel- welcome them to the city of Inglewood. Um, I, I do know, I do know the company, and they, they brought, they brought several more companies. And, uh, they do have Inglewood residents that drive for them. So I, that I know that, that much. Um, and I, I'd just like to welcome them to the city and hope, and hope that we can continue to get more of our individuals in our community to drive trucks and, and, and work in, into the area, you know, um. They already over a period of years, I, I know, I, I got, I could name some that been there for three and four years, working, four and five years, working, working for this company. And I think you also brought out another company called Stone.
I know, we did not buy out Stone. We bought TMS down the road.
Okay, TMS. I know, one of you brought also that it was a lot of, uh, several people from Inglewood working.
Yes, they, there is quite a few from Inglewood, TMS.
Right. So let me just welcome you to the city of Inglewood, and anything that we can do to try to, uh, make it more comfortable. And I, I do have to say, that's, that's my district, and I do know you've been keeping the dirt clean off of the, uh, Michigan Avenue. You've been doing a great job with that, and I got my eyes, I got my eyes over there, so I see what's going on. And I hope that the rest of councilmen can come over and see what's also going on over there.
We say, we welcome it. Thank you.
We will do welcome it, yes.
Any other questions? All right, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Wiley.
Oh, yeah. Did I hear them say they haven't gone through the site plan process yet?
Would I explain? Yeah, I'll be glad to explain. The, um, the, is, the, the city obviously has a process for a, a new business coming into, for operating in the business. The um, the is, the the city obviously has a process for a new business coming into, for operating in the business license. So that's what we're coming through now. Uh but under your site plan ordinance, it is not triggered until we make a physical change to the site of a certain type. Or element that would cause that. We haven't done yet, we yet, we have plans to do that, but we're gonna, so we will be coming in soon to file for a site plan amendment. To do those things with you as it relates to the improvements we want to make that that would trigger the ordinance. So you'll be seeing us very shortly in that process. But we're not there yet until we physically get it all together. We have to first get this license to operate in place, then we go to the next step, site plan.
So you can get a license to operate in the city of Inster without going through the process?
Well, the the site plan process by Michigan law is not required unless you make a physical change to the site that triggers some element of the ordinance. We have not done that yet. As of this point, we're able to operate with the current physical structure of the site in place without changing it, but we want to improve it dramatically. For us and for the city. So at that point, when we want to make those improvements, we have to come and see you first, because that will cause a triggering of the site plan ordinance.
Okay, and one other thing is, um, and you were talking about doing different things. Is there any plan? To move it further back off of Michigan Avenue?
Not at this point.
Okay.
Not at this point, no.
Thank you, that's it.
Mister Mayor, I have one more call. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Watley, you finish?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, per ordinance, it does say change of ownership must register. So how is, how is they in, how are they in there and they have not registered per our ordinance? Something happens, we didn't even know they were there, unless you drive by and the name may have been changed.
We we actually, we actually.
I'm I'm talking to our mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
But Brian's gonna speak to that. Brian, speak to that question.
Yeah, um the, we actually uh informed the city and we filed the application for the registration. And that's what's before the licensing application, the process to register. So that's how we, we, our understanding of how we do it. If there's another step we need to take, we'll be glad to do that. But we thought we took it by filing the application on the licensure as our beginning of the registration. And then the rest of that process.
Who did you file with? So we, so we could, who who did you file with?
We actually received in the mail the junkyard license application and it was filed back in January. It was mailed into the city.
So no one went to the city of Inster to say, look, I want to change ownership and did it by mail, right?
We did, we called and we were told that the office was closed and that we had to do, we had to mail the information in. And we were given, and that's when we mailed it all in in the big, middle of January.
Mister Mayor, I want to know, when was the last time they did an inspection in their building? Because I just, I mean, I mean, I'm not for you not coming with us and being in the city of Inster. I'm just making sure that things are being done in a proper way. But it just seems to me, um, everyone else, if they come in by a building, there used to be a store. They had to go through site plans, they had to go through all of this, it's not, they still have to go through this. So I'm not understanding why it wasn't done. I mean, we got a, we got a person right now trying to get a store open and it was a original store at one time. And now, you, that's what I'm saying. I don't understand, I don't understand that. And and this is, I don't understand that.
We're trying to, we're gonna explain it to you, to it all. Go ahead, City Clerk.
Um, they did file for the application, Mayor Protim Howard. Um I tried to place this onto the agenda. Um, they filed for their junkyard application is what they filed for. They still have to do the business license aspect of it. And so the mayor wanted them to come and have a presentation with you all prior to, um, prior to. Being placed on the agenda. So that is what took place.
Right, because we know that, you know, H and H, the site itself has just been so much contention, you know, with the previous owner. We were ticketing pretty much every day, you know, Officer Wall, I don't know if she's on the call, but um we have tickets for H and H Metals. As it relates to all the debris and the, you know, the junk being piled up so high. So um when we found out this WAVE was taking over this uh site, I wanted them to come before the council. Do a presentation like we're doing now, talk to everybody, let everybody know what's happening. And then, you know, initiate those other triggers. Um but like Brian said, as it relates to just the the ordinance itself, if. Is triggered by anything that's being physically changed at the actual site. And those things will be coming through Planning Commission and then, of course, to the City Council for approval. Brian's an attorney, by the way, just so we're.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Former Wayne County Commissioner, I got all kinds of titles, so anyway, so.
Yeah, we want to make sure we're doing things right and I thought that this was the appropriate step. Because it was just so much, again, just so much going on with the previous owner, H and H Metals. To bring this company forward to to you all to be able to ask any questions that you may have and that way we can start the relationship.
Mayor, we thank you for the chance to introduce ourselves tonight and we really look forward to the chance to kind of work into the individual processes on all those elements as we go forward. As the council, we very much appreciate the council's time. We know you have a lot on your agenda, but we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments, concerns, moving on?
Yes, how long has this been in the pipeline?
Uh since January.
And there was never an opportunity to inform council prior to tonight?
Well, as it relates to an opportunity, we, they were actually going through the process of of finalizing.
You knew they were coming, you knew this was a possibility. And in six months or five months, this is that problem I said I have with transparency, where this administration is concerned. And I figure I have to say that because this is, this is totally new to me.
Okay, I I I get it. And that's why you're hearing it tonight, so we can start the process and move forward.
I think everybody, I think, I I I think the majority of people in this community knew that 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 H and H is moving out of here.
But I'll take responsibility for not telling the council.
Half months.
Yep.
It's been issued for two and a half months. But we, one of the things that we asked Dave Guffey was about what he gonna take, he gonna deal with all them tickets that he got, you remember that? Okay. So, so and and the thing about it is, I mean, I I have to commend them, they they went in there and and they they're cleaning the place up, you know. Because by this time of year, we used to have dust, dirt, dust and everything all down Michigan Avenue. So, I mean, they're doing a good job and 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 just like the the, they came in right, they they became in right. This is, they came in the same way that um, they came in as 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 a new management part of that business. Just like uh, what's that restaurant just come in here? They came in the same way on the new management. Until they took, did they turn all their paperwork around and come back in there, all right, he he's telling you what's right, okay? Now, when they get ready to make uh uh, the improvements of that property there, they go back through the plan, the uh. Go back through the planning commissioner with with the, with the architect uh plans.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Williams. Okay, then, let's move right along, because again, we do have.
Thank you.
On the agenda, so thank you, Brian, thank you, Steve. All right, moving into a public hearing on the F Y twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget appropriations. City Clerk?
Yes, this is a public hearing on the F Y twenty-one, uh I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Budget appropriations. Um and Mayor, there needs to be a motion to open the public hearing.
So move, Mr. Chair, to open the public.
Your support?
What?
Move and properly support a roll call, please.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes, yes.
And Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor, we have seven, uh six years, I'm sorry.
All right, motion open, uh public hearing. So this is the time, um, we've been going over the budget for the last couple of weeks as it relates to the forecasting piece. Amendment piece and then also to the last week with the budget for F Y twenty twenty-two. So this is not for us to vote on tonight. This is not looking for any action, but we are asking for. The council to continue to weigh in with any changes or thoughts, anything that we can do to truly move uh the budget forward. And then also too, we'll recognize questions from the general public. And um once we get to that section, um Councilman Chisholm will give you directions as it relates to how to interact with us on Zoom. So um B J, Brian, which one of you guys can take it?
Yeah, so, um, we spent a a good chunk of last week going through with city council. And everyone going line by line about the uh, what the department had requested budgets were. And then our initial version of the mayor's recommended budget, where we uh changed certain of the lines. And then after going through with council, we've made a few additional changes. And what we're looking for here is just, uh, we're trying to get input in an uh, and thoughts on. Where else do people think that we need to make certain changes? Um, I don't want to run down line by line here, it, we've done that before. Um, but I would like to just say, you know, if there's questions, comments, uh, we're, we're looking for them. Want to make sure that we incorporate everything, want to make sure we do this right, want to make sure everyone's behind us when we're doing this.
All right. Council? Go ahead, Councilman Wash.
Um, I guess I was proposing, you know, to save money of the budget. Um, and that will be to try to eliminate four positions for the time being. And that will be planning tech specialists, um payroll, the H R generalist. And I T's professional consultant. Um, the planning tech specialists, um, of course, is not here. So, um, it would be somebody, of course, that would end up taking Adriana's old spot. To fill in for the tech specialist. Um, and payroll, since we, you know, not sure if this is going to be passed by council or not. Um, for what's in our um agenda. But I was just thinking those four positions alone would possibly, you know, of course, save some money. Not sure if my colleagues agree or not, but it was just something that was in mind. Um, to hire those essential positions until we come back to the next budget to just, you know, save the city money.
Yeah, I think we agree, we totally agree. The only one that, we were out of the, we're wondering, you were talking about the I T consultant, I think. Um, V J, if we can hit that line item, because I don't know exactly what the the councilwoman is referring to. Because I know that the I T professionals, you know, we we've actually. Agreed, okay, go ahead.
So what we did with the the I T department here was we cleared out the effects of a salaried individual. So that's why salary, social security, group insurance, um and and then both the e- employee uh benefit contributions. Are zeroed out. The reason we did that was uh, by eliminating that position. Our our plan was, okay, we're using Nerds Express. Um, I I think you're probably looking at the sixty-three thousand six hundred there, right?
Yeah, I thi- I think I'm saying the same thing that you're saying is that we have Nerds Express as, um, maybe I didn't say it correctly. As professional consultants, but to um take out the line item of, uh, and let me go back to it. Where Finney is, you know, where his position was at at the time. Maybe I think I'm saying the same thing as um as you, V J.
Yep, it's uh, it's just left or right hand, whether, you know, we're we're using the consulting line. As uh, to make up the fact that we're not using the salaries line, that's all it is.
Yeah, and that's, okay, so it would actually be the three, okay.
Yeah.
Things that I listed.
And V J, you know, just so we're, we're all on the same page, as it relates to the planning technician. What we're looking at doing just for operations overall is that the city planner will go under the building department. And report to the chief building official. Um, so when a person comes into city hall as it relates to, um, you know, trying to open up a business or apply for a license. Um, all of that stuff will be right in that, in that area. So, you know, the folks that's there already, we have, um, you know, Carolyn along with Tina and Gina is right there. They can intake that information, pass it along to the city planner. So that's kind of what the technician used to do. And, you know, work with the property stuff, um, as it relates to property sales. So, um, we're just working to basically streamline the whole process. And I think it's gonna actually really work out well as it relates to the process, so I'm definitely um in favor of that. And then the um H R generalist, we had talked before, um, just about the position and, you know, of course, last year. When uh, when Ms. Rose went from the generalist position to taking on the full-time director's position. A position that had been vacated for some time. And um, and she ended up still staying on with us and taking care of our payroll function until we moved it over to Rhonda. So it's like, okay, let's see how we can, you know, get all of the services that we need. And that's where we have D M payroll and, you know, thanks to Sue and V J for them to, you know, go through and truly vet that whole thing. As it relates to being able to handle some of the H R functions as well. Um, you'll see a significant price savings uh with that, probably thirty thousand dollars what we're looking at. Uh, we are proposing that um, uh Mayor Protim Howard and I, we um met with. We actually had interviews with the former councilwoman Mitchell and Pastor Overman and Sue and Rhonda. Where we interviewed H R, H R manager. And we were successful in regards to bringing a person, getting a person right now, they're going through all of the onboarding stuff and all that stuff. So we'll be bringing them hopefully before council at next council meeting. Um, however, um, we were looking at possibly bumping up that salary five thousand dollars. To be able to retain that person and get that person, um, you know, in the H R position. A little bit more money from the fifty-one thousand, I believe, was V J to what is it, fifty-six? Um, to, and and we will still be saving twenty-five thousand um dollars as it relates to that, uh making that move. Um, also, um, when you talked about the, um, you talked about the planning technician. The generalist position, and then what was the other position you had mentioned?
Pay, payroll, planning payroll and H R.
Okay.
V J to like, kind of let us know how much those three would kind of be in total. If we.
A total savings, yeah, V J, if you could do that, give us a total savings for those three. Positions and and know that we won't necessarily lack service. That's the other part of it, you know, as we're cutting. We want to be able to balance service to deliverables to to our people. And it relates to the general public and of course to, to to you all when when needed. So, um, doing this, we won't lack any service. Matter of fact, we'll streamline service. Sure. And make them redundant. Go ahead, V J.
Uh, just on that, the planning tech was the forty thousand, the H R generalist is the thirty-eight, which. Uh, would include the payroll function. Um, and then the I T professional consultant, we have uh sixty-three thousand six hundred budgeted for it right now.
So how much is that in total, V J?
The sa- the savings, V J, because you gotta include um the I T's fringe benefits and, you know, that as well. All of them, actually.
Let me, give me one moment here.
Mr. Chair. Okay, if he's looking that up, uh, go ahead, Councilman Shaw, did you have anything?
Yes, the, you know, I wanted to propose to my colleagues the, the um. Possibility of also looking at city hall for four days instead of five days. And also with the uh not to increase for the next year's budget of the water and sewage rates. I know we have a system of about ten million dollars in unrestricted cash there. Um, and also the the system is going to produce a net cash savings of three point nine. So, uh, that, that would I, that is what I would like to propose to my colleagues to to consider. Um, closing city hall down to four days, we did this in the past. It worked tremendously in saving um in our budget. And also, looking at the, the rate increase for the next fiscal year. And also the looking at the uh the rate increase for the next fiscal year. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and we'll make sure that we get back with the effects of that, um. You know, as it relates to cost savings and then, of course, what we'll be doing um in the meantime. Um so we're all on the same page, cuz we definitely need to have a plan, if we say, okay, we're gonna go from four to five days, you know. And how we would roll that out and then, of course, the cost savings for that, Councilman Shaw. So as it relates to the water rates, um you know, that's kind of above. Little bit above me, um Vijay, Brian and Jerome, you guys are on the line, I don't know, I know we got. A lot of projects coming up. I know we have been talking about order rates and, of course, you know, we don't wanna raise water anymore, we had to find revenue to to offset that, so. Um is that something that we can speak to right now or is that something that we need to get back with uh the councilman on?
Uh we're still doing work on the calculation of the rates and we're still waiting on some information from Wayne County, but. As a general rule of thumb. The cost of providing water only goes up. So if you don't raise your rates to your own customers every year. You're just pushing the effect of that increase into a future year where your customers get hit twice, basically. So as a general rule of thumb, I typically do not make recommendations about freezing or cutting rates ever. Uh unless the cost structure, for whatever change, for for whatever reason, flattens for a year. So as long as Great Lakes Water raises your rates, as long as the cost of construction keeps going up. I don't know that it financially would benefit the city to not raise rates in a given year.
And also, Mr. Chair, um we talked about that professional consultant. Or a project manager for DPS, now my question would be also. Will the prior. Prior um uh project managers be taken off and we bring in in-house or we're gonna still use vendors as well?
Mr. Bivins?
Yes, sir, uh Councilman Shaw, that position is an in-house position. And our contractors will still be involved in what I do in that department. The benefit of this is for us, is for us, the city. To have information readily at hand that I can provide to you that's not in my head, that's all that's laid out, so. When I come before you guys with these large projects and you approve them, you see the end result. Where the project manager, you get to follow that project. So at any given time, if you have a question or concern how those dollars are being spent, they're presented before you. How the mayor sees fit, he could give it to you monthly or he could give it to you quarterly. All I'm saying is, in the past, we had this position over there, it was called an administrative superintendent. And I was that person and I did that, I tracked. Fuel, I tracked everything for that department and I put out reports to other department heads. Of what's going on with the fuel, what's going on with different accounts and different projects. All I'm asking now is time because I have, like Brian just told you. We never cut water rates and I understand your concern, I'm a resident here too. But we have to increase water rates as projects increase because our system is old. Is very old and it needs addressing and every year I'm gonna be addressing it, as you know. I'm addressing it in your in your district right now, in the northwest section is coming up. I'm putting, taking four-inch mains out and putting eight to increase the water over there. I got six-inch mains, I'm gonna have to be removing, I got two-inch mains in somewhere and four-inch, I gotta bring them all up to eight. So what I'm doing and what I'm asking for is a benefit to the city.
And I and I truly understand where you're coming from, Mr. Bivins. You know, when we get, when we look at those rates, you know, I understand that, I mean, I know we had, we had to do it, we did it in the past. And there was a time, I think maybe sixteen or seventeen, where they didn't didn't raise the rates. The rates really needs to be, I understand all the projects that we have. Really reasonable because rates can really run folks out of the city. And I do want those rates to be reasonable and affordable to our community. Because as you, as you know, and as you have seen down through the years, how this has been an issue. Um back in, back in the past, in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, where we had field council chambers dealing with these. Uh way the meters was reading, uh way people were being charged with these rates, you know. If we can have a better system so that these rates can be reasonable. And everyone in the city of Inkster's meters can be read properly. And detected properly so that there won't be no difference in how we're charging for the service. And that's my concern with that, I want it to be reasonable, you know. Reasonable rates and not just something astronomical because I understand cost goes up, construction goes up, but still in the end. We don't want to run residents out of the city of Inkster.
But, Councilman Shaw, and I'm totally in agreeance with you, and when we present the rate. Uh formula and calculation for the next year, we take all that into consideration, along with the projects we're doing. We give you the best rate that's out there to accomplish what we're trying to do, improve the infrastructure of the city. And that's a must, you know, we, like the mayor said, the mayor sat on council, you've been on council, Mayor Protem's been on council. Councilman Wally Chisholm, so you guys know. It's been a long time since we done some infrastructure and now we're getting into that and we're doing it. And yes, I understand it comes at a cost, but when we kick that can down the road. Like Brian said, when those years we didn't increase the water rate, it hit us the following year or the year after that, it goes up higher because. You can't just stagnate something and then expect it not to change, cuz it's gonna change, and we just pay double or triple. On the back end when we can spread it out or like we showed you guys last year, we gave you a five-year projection on the water rates. So we're we're trying to do our best to be conservative. And work with the public and work with the mayor and council, but at the same time. You challenged me to move the city forward and get this infrastructure in better shape than it is now. And I accept that challenge, but also need you guys support and understanding, hey, it costs money to do this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Chisholm.
Uh, couple of things I just wanted to put out there for the administration to, I guess, take into consideration. Um and as we go forward in our budget talks, I don't necessarily need like any type of response or savings numbers back right now. But one of the things I thought about was online processing, there's a three percent charge that a middleman gets on anything that. Uh a a resident of the city of Inkster pays online, whether it's their taxes or whether it's their water bill, anything. I wanted to know if we could at least look into maybe perhaps bringing that in-house or getting a decrease in rate. If we bring it in-house, we could still charge at least one percent and maybe divert that one percent over to youth and young adult activities at the rec center. Cuz I know some of my colleagues and some of the residents in the community always talk about, have anything going into that particular fund to fund those activities.
It's six percent?
Oh, it's six percent?
Yes, sir.
No, it's three, it is three, three percent.
You go online right now to pay your water bill, it costs you six percent.
Well, oh, wait a minute, it's it's, okay, I get what you're saying, it's the rate, if it's over like a hundred dollars, it does turn into six percent.
Yeah, exactly.
Huh?
Tell you go online and pay your water bill, see how much they charging.
No, it's three percent if it's under a hundred dollars and then it goes, it doubles as it.
Who got a water bill under a hundred? I know. They charge you nine percent, we'll be telling.
But that's just a thought, if we could bring that in-house.
Yeah, I know Vijay, I've been talking about that for quite some time now, go ahead, Vijay.
Credit card processing, that would be, I think that'd be a very large task to bring in-house. It's something we can explore, but uh I think it requires us to then start having direct relationships with. Uh whether it's Visa or whatnot, um I would have to explore more into that. But uh it's something we can look into, a- as far as the percentage online, one of the things that we did push and we got. Uh working, I think at the end of January or end of February, was an e-check payment option. Which is a flat one dollar fifty cent per payment, no matter how much the actual amount is. And so that's what we were really pushing for people to start using. And the reason I say that is I don't want people to think that they only have that three percent option on.
Yeah, but good idea though, Steve, we definitely can explore that a little bit more and see what it'll take.
Hey, hey, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to add to to Councilman Shaw and the other council people concern. I do seek money from the state, like I'm having that special council meeting on the twentieth. For that thirty-two point for million-dollar sewer project, that's money that the state hopefully will fund us some of that. To help offset the water and I have another special meeting coming up in June. Where I'm working with the engineers now for the water infrastructure, cuz we're going out for a grant for that too. And by us being a distressed community, fortunately, and and it's a good thing that we don't have to pay the money back when we get it. Because we are distressed community, so they take that into consideration, so I'm always looking for money, I'm always searching money, I'm always. My engineers, both engineering firms, I'll always have them looking for ways I can save money on the waterfront. So just take that into consideration when you look at my budget, thank you.
And a couple of other things I had, Mr. Chair, uh we are top. Top-heavy in the city of uh Inkster and some things are. We should look into as we never really do, we might kind of sort of dabble around the conversations, but. When we look at our attorney's bill, we've never did a cost comparison with other cities and what they're paying their city attorneys for representation. When we look at um a public safety director, cuz that's what other, some of the other communities do. Or they have one person at the top to eliminate costs in that department. Um I know one of my colleagues had asked at a prior budget meeting about a comparison between. When we brought the building department in-house versus what it was costing us when we had it um contracted out. And one, two, three, four, so those are four things I would like for the administration to look at, one, two, three, four, or. Three, okay, three things I would like for the administration, or no, that's four, cuz I said online processing already, four things I would like for you guys to look at. So when we go into our future budget talks, that's something we can potentially explore more in depth. And I'm not, and it's not trying to take aim at any particular person or employee, but is either. We try to fix the issue now as fiduciaries of the city and find some type of resolution or not be able to pay any employees at all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Councilman Chisholm, and we definitely are working on the building department comparison, we just been trying to get this out the way as it relates to the budget, so. I'll definitely make sure that I have that in between now and the time that we meet again, you had that information, I do have it. Dot it twice, I'll make sure I get that to you.
Vijay, I'm.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Washington.
Vijay, was it looking to that for me?
Yep, so I wanna make sure I understand everything I'm adding up, so I know we have the, it's about fifty-one thousand. Uh total comp for the generalist slash payroll role, the planning tech all in is about. Fifty-three, five, and then what I wasn't sure about for the IT department, you.
I think we already went over that, yeah.
So exclude that.
Then you said payroll.
Okay, so I mean, if we're just talking uh the generalist payroll and planning tech, that together is one hundred and four thousand five hundred.
And you'll just eliminate ten thousand. You'll deduct ten thousand for the payroll function for DM, if that, if that goes.
Yeah.
So your overall savings is what, ninety, I mean, ninety, what, ninety-four?
It'd be about ninety-five, although it could be a little higher uh with the state helping us on payroll as well.
Right.
And also, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Shaw.
I don't, I don't know if my colleague is done yet.
Oh, I'm done, yep.
Thank you, ma'am, uh also, you know, if we can explore a ten percent across the board. Cut for all of all of our departments and also uh mayor and council as well. So just something, you know, that we can just, you know, think about doing and seeing how. That can help us in our next fiscal year and and beyond. Uh we did it before, we took a hit uh some some years ago. My mayor Protim can can speak to that and I think, you know, it worked out pretty well, so it's something that, Mr. Chair, we can take a look at.
Yep, Vijay, you have a note of that, I know we were talking about twenty percent across the board. We can do both, so we give you ten and we give you twenty, you know, any savings at this point are savings and we know in order for us to continue on as a city. We must work together, understand, you know, where we're at and what we have to do, so, you know. I'm willing to, you know, make those sacrifices and I'm hoping that, you know, those folks that's listening on the line that work. With us, work for us, understand what position we are in, what we have to do as it relates to a city to keep moving forward. In the right direction, it won't last a lifetime, but we have to do what we have to do now. And then make a plan to sustain it, not just for five years, but, you know, moving into twenty, thirty years and beyond. We can, as relates to our plan. Okay, go ahead, Councilman uh Williams.
You wanna ask people to take a cut, if they're talking about creating new positions, come on.
Well, let me make sure that we're clear on 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 that, um we're talking about the general fund. So, you know, most of our activities, police, fire, um mayor's office, treasury, planning. They're. Supported by the general fund, that's taxes from, you know, our, the people and businesses that we collect. Um that's the revenues, you know, as it relates to revenues coming in, now, the water fund is something totally different.
Now, we then you have took employees and moved them from the general fund to the water department, so how come we can't look at, if we talking about putting a. A a additional person there, take somebody from the general fund and put them into that water department, since you got so much money.
Well, I mean, and that will be when the, if if this council approves the actual new position and that's something that. You know, anyone could apply for and we would look to promote from within if we can, we can find a person that's qualified to do that. But understand this, this is, we, this is something, again, what Mr. Bivins was saying, and I think, Mr. Bivins, you didn't. Just emphasize it enough that, you know, you went from, Mr. Bivins, speak to that, man, so you, we we all on the same page, you went from. The consent agreement, you went from how many employees, divisions and all of that, you mentioned even the fact that. You used to be this project manager type person and then how many did you, how many you have today?
Yes, Mayor, Mr. Bivins is experiencing some technical difficulties right now.
Okay, all right, so it just, just, just again, we're we're trying to, you know, put some things in place that's gonna help us. Again, we need to be able to have redundancies when we're operating and doing business. We need to be able to go right to the data and the information to be able to present to council and whomever may need this information. And know that we're constantly seeking grants, as you heard from Congresswoman Tolee, being known, you know, we're we're constantly talking to our rep and. You know, just whoever that will hear us to to help us with more money for our bottom line, for number one, our general fund. But also too with the water to offset the border costs, cuz we know that the waters continue to rise. But we know that we had these projects that, again, our infrastructure is what it is, it's fifty years old. And that's why you have those problems, because we haven't addressed those things, we need the people in place in order to execute it. And I think if we do it the right way, we'll see savings across the board, and we don't have so many water leaks. Um we don't have emergencies where these guys, we call them out on overtime, you know, to to fix those water main breaks and those things, um so. We're trying to be proactive better than, rather than reactive, Councilman Williams, so I understand where you're at with it.
Well, we we can dialogue on that some other time, but I I tell you, I I differ on that.
We, we can dialogue on that some other time, but I, I tell you, I, I differ on that.
I totally understand.
If you're going to try to include the services of people, then instead of trying to bring a project manager in here, you can hire more additional staff. To go to move over into that department.
Well, it's a specialty, you know, we wanna, we wanna, you know, that's a specialty position. So that, you know, we need qual, you know, qualifications for that position. Mr. Bivens didn't mention that he, he is, you know, a, a accounting professional. That's kind of, that was his background before he got into the. EPW. So, you know, saying it relates to tracking all of the fuel, tracking all of the, you know, the. So that's, I'm just saying, you know, that's what I'm supposed to do right now, you know, I, I get the general fund. I'm not going to buck on none of that stuff, but. As it relates to the water fund, you know, the water fund, how much does the water fund have right now?
Enterprise. This is enterprise, man. I mean.
Well, how much is it? So we can have an idea versus the general fund. You're, you're on mute, VJ.
I don't have the exact amount of hand. Let me, I gotta hop into BSNA, see if I can pull that.
And I know Brian is on here. He's looking. I see him over there looking right now.
About it was ten point five million unrestricted cash.
Yeah. So I just wanted to make sure that we saying that, you know, Councilman Shaw from the treasurer's position, you know, and. You know, we're all on the same page that it is.
Yeah, June thirty, June thirty, twenty twenty, you did have ten and a half million of cash.
Yeah, it's its own enterprise, man. I mean, and I understand that. I, I, I've been here before. I know what we need to do. Um, Mr. Chair, just one quick question real quick. Now, does that take away the six people that we wanted to hire within that uh. Within that department?
They've already been budgeted for each year. You guys have approved two people, additional people. Um, each, each year. So it's not six more additional people.
Right, right, right. No, no, not six more additional. I'm saying the ones that we.
Yeah, they're covered. Yes. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, Councilwoman Wiley.
Uh, yes, I have some questions in relation to the number of uh, people that have left the city. Uh, those salaries, a lot of them have not been replaced. What is that money like? I mean, is that money that doesn't have to be included in this budget amendment since. Like we've, we've lost like eight or nine department heads and five or six essential personnel. I mean, I haven't seen Exodus like this since Moses led the children of Israel out of Egypt. So where is that money? How do we incorporate that?
Savings for when most did that, but uh, in our budget amendments, everything is broken down by line item. And we tried to take that into account. So if someone was. Uh, if someone departed and we didn't fill that for a month, or if we made an assumption that we would fill that in two months. Uh, that's all included in the budget amendments. And a, a lot of the notes that we have on the side will explain that.
Okay, can someone tell me how many things within the budget amendment? Were not voted on by council? Because I saw something in there about a severance package, and I don't remember a severance package.
Yeah, and I think uh, Councilwoman, that's going to be a previous business. Um, that's considering approval of the FY budget amendments. So if you can hold that question until we get to that. We'll definitely be willing to, to answer that question at that time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments from the council before we get off into the general public? Uh, as it relates to the FY twenty twenty-one, twenty-two proposed budget. Again, we're not voting on this tonight. This is just for us to continue to, to discuss, figure out where we need to trim, and then bring it back. Next council meeting, hopefully for approval. If not, then making sure that we get all of those things that you need in order to. Support the proposed budget for next year. Any other questions, comments from the council? Okay, Councilman Chisholm, if you can give uh, folks the.
Is there any uh, for the time limit clerk or mayor?
Uh, yeah, well, I mean, you know, let's be, you know, we're going to be respectful to that, you know, we'll answer as much as we can, but one minute is that, you know, we'll go from there. And then any other questions they can put into writing. Um, the general public can always email us and put it into writing. We can get back with you. We can't get through.
All righty, to the general public, um, that had joined us by Zoom video application, please use the raise hand feature to be recognized. To speak to the budget hearing for FY twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, for those who have called in by telephone, please press star. Nine to uh, raise your hand to be recognized as well. At this, and if there's anyone watching from the uh. Facebook application, because we are streaming live on Facebook, you will have to. On Zoom in an effort to be recognized to speak during this time for the public hearing. Uh, you have one minute to speak. Please state your name for the record once you are recognized. Mr. Mayor, this time we have two people with their hands up.
All right, good. Let's recognize Shirley Hankerson, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and.
Good evening.
Citizens of Inkster. Uh, my first question and comment is regarding um, the uh. The presentation that was done by the new owners of H and M or H and H, whatever it is. I can't talk on that? Just the budget? Okay, we, I, I don't have, I, I'm done then. Let me know when I can talk on, on that project. So I'll.
Yeah, that'll be regular, that'll be regular.
Budget. I, I heard everything and I know what you guys are doing. Just do the right thing. All right. That's what we elected you guys to do. Do the right thing. And if, and if, and if the, and if everybody in your staff, Mayor, is taking a pay cut, I would, I would appreciate you taking one as well.
Oh, yeah, I'm the first. I mean, if that's the case, you know, I've, I've already said that. I don't have a problem with that. And understand that, you know, the only reason why I haven't is because, you know, all of my things are in the compensation package. And let me be clear, in the compensation package for the mayor's office, it does include a vehicle for thirty-six thousand. That the uh, compensation board voted on for me to have, and I haven't taken that from the city. So, and I will not be taking that from the city. So that's a thirty-six thousand dollar savings that we have already from the mayor's office. So we're all understanding, you know, I'm willing to take a cut. It's not an issue. All right, let's go over to Yvette Prock, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Hope all is well. I just have a quick question. The amendments that are being proposed, are they on last year's budget or this year's budget or next year's budget?
So, the amendments are for the current year budget. Um.
Okay, that, that, I'm not to cut you off, E, um, VJ. I, that's all I wanted to know. And has the money for those amendments already been spent?
Um, not necessarily, be, because the, the budget amendments, what they're doing is helping us predict where we'll be at come June thirtieth. So, not having yet gotten to June thirtieth, I can't say it's been spent so much as part of it's been spent and we're. Uh, forecasting or projecting what the next two months will be like, so that we can figure out where exactly we'll be at, at June thirtieth.
Okay, um, the water, I want to speak to the water, if that's okay, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Um, water, I'm, hey, I can't even believe I'm going to say this, because I don't want my water rates raised either. But if we get the meters correct, I think everybody knows that your utilities go up every single year. It's not a surprise. So if we're now having to pay more for water, it makes sense that water is going to go up. But we gotta do something about these meters. There's a senior citizen and I, out there in Inkster. Her water went from sixty dollars to two hundred and some dollars. And she came down there and she was told, there's nothing nobody can do. And she has no family here. Now, we know she lives alone. Her water didn't just jump up that high. So if we fix the meters, I think the public is more than willing to help out. To bring us in line. I don't see how we not waste, raise the waters. And I do support Jerome in getting what he needs in his department, because it seems like he meets his budget all the time. And my last question is, are we on a net thirty and paying our bills? Do we pay our bills with spend thirty days?
Uh, that's our goal. Sometimes it depends on when we get. Our invoices and when the invoices get entered. Um, so I, I mean, I can't necessarily say yes or no, but. If something's turned over to AP, uh, sorry, the accounts payable. Yeah, we're, we are working on ensuring that it gets paid as quickly as possible.
So when we get it, we pay it in thirty days. The benefit of that is, is that if we do that. We will always know where we stand month by month. So you'll know if you have to cut. So I, we're not doing that. I would encourage us to do that. And thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And also too, uh, let me just say, there's two commissioners in relation to that senior that you were talking about. Um, this is the first that I'm hearing about it. Um, so I don't know if you, if you, you took another step and reported it to our treasurer, however. Um, you know, and that's for the general public in, in general. That's why we're here to serve. You know, your councilperson, you can get with them. Or you can get with, you know, me as the mayor, and we'll figure out how we can get your help. I totally agree with you. We have one of our seniors right now that's alone, and we know that. We shouldn't have even allowed her to go away. So I'm going to figure out, you know, if you give me that information, please share that with me. Um, if you want to share it with me publicly, or, you know, text it to me, you have my number. And that way I can follow up with treasury and figure out exactly what's going on in that regard. Because we do have instances like that where people come in and we see their water rates jump, or, you know, the water, you know, jump from. You know, sixty, like you said, to two hundred. And, and we sent someone out to check on the meter and, you know, or check on what's going on in the house. So please, um, send that information to me. I need that.
I will, because she had a plumber and everything come out and expect her house for leaks and everything. So. I will definitely get that information to you. And thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Chisholm, they don't have a name on it, but last numbers are three, five, nine, seven. Recognize, please. Go ahead, can you state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is uh, Elliot Stabler. I have a question about the parks and recreation um, revenue budget. I have a question about the fifteen hundred dollars that uh, Alex Legion stole from the uh, Joe Biden campaign. Uh, where's that money, um, you know, notated at in the budget? And uh, the second question or comment that I have is, I agree with Councilman Chisholm. That the city does need to look for a new city attorney. Because the current city attorney is a cor, is a overpriced cornball. And I believe the city can find a more cheaper reasonable price.
Thank you. All right, let's move that one right along. Um, let me say this, uh, as it relates to the Alex Legion investigation. Officer Lebo, actually Detective Lebo is in charge of that, and we are moving forward with that. So we will be coming back to the council, um, you know, of course, you know, giving you a report update on that. As it relates to what happened in that instance. Um, she's, you know, asked for, it's just a lot of stuff that, you know, goes into. On actual investigation. So know that we haven't let that go. We haven't dropped the ball on that. Know that we owe you an explanation. Also too, with uh, the Parks and Rec Commissioners, to be able to go before them as well. But we are in an active, open investigation. All right. Let's recognize uh, former Councilwoman Con, Connie Mitchell, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am coming to you on behalf of the Friends of the Leanna Hicks Public Library Foundation. Uh, we would like to request and donate to City Hall's property. What is called a little library, a little lending library, that we would like.
Commissioner, uh, Mitchell.
Yes.
Don't mean to cut you off, but we're in a public hearing for the budget for FY twenty-one and twenty-two. We're not in a public.
Oh, I didn't know. I'm sorry. Generally.
I'm sorry, ma'am. If you can just hold on for a little bit, we'll be able to get to that.
I'll, I'll be right here.
Yes, ma'am. And this is again, um, if you have your hands raised, this is for the public hearing. For you all, for us to hear from you. Um, you know, as it relates to the budget, the proposed budget. Um, you know, we're not voting on it tonight. This is for us to all engage with each other as a community, so we can have a strong budget. Um, that everybody is on board with moving forward and we can be accountable to that. So if you have any comments for that. That's, now's the time. So let's recognize Kimberly Faison.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner.
So my comment is regarding um, the project support person at DPS. Um, we heard from our director. He told us that the position is budgeted for, that it will add long-term sustainability of our projects that we already have in the pipeline. That it'll expand capacity and knowledge uh, within the department. He told us that at some point he's going to retire. And there will be a need to um, transition all of that knowledge in those skills within a department. So I really don't understand all the nitpicking about a position that's already funded. We don't need to be cutting corners when it comes to our infrastructure. Cities need good infrastructure if they want to retain talent. If they want to be able to attract businesses and obviously, most importantly, to be able to. Um, maintain a high quality of life for residents. So I really just want to add um, my support. For that position. Um, could, I mean, we need strong capital improvement as a community if we want to grow. And that's, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Faison. Ready to chair, uh, recognize uh, Lynette Kane, Commissioner Kane.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and said this is on Inkster. Uh, Mayor, I would just like to ask a question about the line item that Councilman Chisholm brought up, which is for youth services at the Inkster Rec Center. I wanted to know, is there a line item for that? And if so, um, can you tell me how much it is and what it is being used for?
Yeah, so, uh, let me just say that um, you know, we, we, we were fortunate, we're fortunate enough to be awarded with. Um, eight hundred thousand dollars for our first phase of the renovations of the rec complex. So each year we've had historically capital improvement line item of fifty thousand dollars. Um, in, in an effort to provide some youth programming, um, the, we are recommending. Uh, well, I'm recommending, um, that we make a new line item for um, that line item. So it's forty thousand that we have in there now, I believe, VJ. Is it forty thousand? Or do we up? So it's, it's forty thousand. And, and what we're looking to do is to be able to, and Miss, Miss, uh, Commissioner Kane, you know, just like I know everyone in Inkster that we have. You know, our youth programs, you know, you know, looking for money, um, whether it's for.
Right.
The, 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 the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the after-screw program stuff, the programs that we're running over at the complex for reading. Um, uh, we, they're, they're actually doing fundraisers. Um, you know, we don't want to disencourage them from doing fundraisers, but we don't want them to. Have to do fundraisers to, you know, raise money for, you know, football uniforms for kids. We know that, you know, where we are in the city of Inkster, um, our poverty rate is uh, one of the highest in, in, in the nation, unfortunately, as it relates to. Um, just poverty overall. And we know that around those different organizations that they've always come to us as individuals. You know, to ask for money to run programming to help our kids. So we wanted to be able to put some money into that line item. So then, uh, organizations, say for me, I'm championing right now, the um, Inkster Buccaneers and the two football organizations have come together. Here in the city of Inkster. Um, they will go before the planning, I mean, I'm sorry, the rec commission, because I want the commissioners to be involved in this as well. And, you know, pitch their proposal, say, okay, this is how much we need, and then it'll, it'll go from there. And we're looking to actually grow that line item. We don't know if we, right now, we're looking at the, you know, the monies that's coming in for the rec. I believe it's like four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, I believe it is, of VJ, as it relates to the, to tax capture overall. So when we get our new director in, hopefully within the next few weeks. We'll be able to sit down and really go through and see where we can, we need to try to add some additional monies to that. Because we know that one youth program could possibly suck that money out. But what I'm trying to do is create, again, a line item for youth service where. You know, people can come in with different. You know, people can come in with different programs, go before the, with, with the director's support, of course, go before the. Uh, Parks and Rec Commission, and they can say, okay, yep, we're gonna fund this project, or we're gonna fund this or fund that, you know, of course, with the. You know, the council, of course, putting it into the, the line item. It hasn't made it there yet. So, um, this is what we're proposing for FY twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Chair recognize, Jerome, before we get to you, let's do, um, Commissioner Daniels. And these are all my planning commissioners. So thank you guys so much for chiming in. Because we know what you do is a very intricate part of our city and moving it forward and keeping it together. Commissioner Daniels.
Absolutely. Um, good evening, um, Mayor, City Council and the City of, uh, Residents, uh, City of Inster Residents. I just wanted to make a comment with regard to the, um, company that's, uh, replacing. Are they replacing or did they buy out H and H?
Okay, so that's. I know you guys are eager for that. So they, 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 they bought out H and H.
Okay, that, and, and that's what I thought you said, but I just wanted clarity, because I think that was the.
But Commissioner, let me stop you. I'm sorry, this is for the public hearing for the budget.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, so with regard to the bucks.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I wanted to echo, um, Commissioner Faison. Um, and, 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 and just by repeating everything she said. I strongly support, um, Director Vivens. Um, it sounds like, um, we have exactly what we need to make the city move forward.
You, you, we lost you there. You went, actually, you went mute. So, um, Commissioner Daniels.
She might have bumped the button or something by mistake. I'm trying to send it to her.
Commissioner Daniels, unfortunately, you went mute. So we, we just heard.
You know, my phone started ringing, so that made me go mute. Okay, anyway. If, you know, that, it never fails, right? So my phone started ringing, and I should have just hung it up, but, and I didn't want to click myself off.
Right.
But I, I support, I support, um, Director Vivens.
Okay. Okay, and then look like you have one last hand, Director Vivens?
Or is that?
Yes, sir. I'm here.
Go ahead, Director.
Let me explain to council. Before the consent agreement took place, and our department with thirty-five employees. Where I had a road division, I had a water division, I had a building maintenance division, I had a garage, and I had a parks division. I did the consent agreement, they cut me down to eight employees. They cut me down to eight, so, and trying to rebuild the department. And still maintain the level of service that the city requires. I, I'm doing my best, and I, I'm thankful for the county commissioners coming out to support me. As well as the mayor, the treasurer, and Plant Moran. And I just want the citizens to understand, I don't ask for what I don't need. I wouldn't put that on the city. As I say, I live here too, so when I ask, it affects me too. So I wouldn't ask for what I don't need to keep this city moving forward and increase our infrastructure. Because as we began to do that, if businesses come here and look at this city. They see that we're doing things, we're fixing the road, we're fixing our water, we're fixing the sewer, we're. Decombinating our sewer, separating the sanitary from the store. And that's what we want to do. We want to keep the city moving forward. So I should appreciate, I appreciate the support, and I just ask council to understand. What I'm asking for and where I'm coming from. And I appreciate you listening to me at this time. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vivens. Okay, council, um, it doesn't look like we have any more folks from general public asking questions as it relates to the budget right now. So I asked for a motion to close a public hearing.
Our support.
Yep, it's been moved and properly supported. I don't think any discussion on that, right, clerk? Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Williams. I don't see him on here.
He's muted, his video is off. I'm trying to, there he is.
There he is. Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right. Motion carries, moving right along, consent agenda.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Your support.
Support.
Moved and properly supported, roll call, please.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Chisholm, Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, then motion carries, boards and commissions. Moving around the council, any appointments for boards and commissions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, on, um, the Tifa Board. Um, we had our first meeting, well, two weeks ago. And we couldn't conduct it because we did not have enough people on the Tifa to conduct the meeting. Um, so I, I, I reached out to one, um. Charmaine Kennedy, and she said she would like to be reappointed.
Okay.
To the Tifa meet, to, to the Tifa.
Is there support? Well, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Washington. I'm sorry, yes. No problem, and Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim, you still have the floor. You have any others?
Uh, yes, and, and also too, last two weeks ago, when we were voting on, uh, people to get on, um, uh, uh, boards and commissions. We voted some people on without the documentation, and we still don't have that. Documentation for Mr. Harrington.
We have his documentation.
Okay.
It has been received and filed. I don't forward it on, I just accepted it into my office and filed it with the proper paperwork.
Oh, okay, you do? Okay, okay. So I thought we'd look at it first.
No, if I didn't have it, I would, you know, let you guys know, but I had it. He just had filed it with the wrong person, actually, and they brought it to me, so.
Okay, all right, well, okay, I'm, I'm done then. Okay.
Would you, would you like that information be forwarded to you?
Oh, yes, I thought we all get to look at it. That's why.
I thought so too.
Okay, I'll send it to you.
Okay, we'll make sure that we get that to you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, Councilman Shaw.
I just have a question with the Youth Commission. Is there a certain type of age, is there age range that we are looking to, uh, do the Youth Commission?
You know, I would say just to make it vibrant, man, fourteen to twenty-four.
Okay.
It would be appropriate.
Okay, very good. I have an appointment. Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, we, we definitely need to, you know, get them going. They're eager. You know, kids are eager, so, you know, want to make some of those appointments, so. Definitely want to hear those appointments that you have. Any others?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
I was looking at an email with two names for, uh, Commissioner Iris Long. And Joanne Blan would like to be appointed to the Beautification Committee.
Yep.
Support.
Can we do them both at one time or separate?
We can do it separate for clarity.
Okay, you have, the first one is Iris Long?
Yes.
Is there support?
What?
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, motion carries. Next person.
And the next person is Joanne Blair. Make a motion that we appoint her to the Beautification Committee.
Don't move.
Support.
Moved and properly supported in discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, motion carries. All right, and then, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Howard, District Five is still vacant, looking for Parks and Rec Commissioner. So when we get the changes, please.
All right, thank you.
From your district, so you guys will be represented. We got a lot of things happening over at the Parks and Rec. Facility, as you heard from Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib tonight. Um, as we did for shovel-ready project to. The Appropriations Committee or the federal government, for two point three million dollars for. Addition to the rec center, which will include a banquet facility and senior facility. So definitely want those people to be involved in the process. So, um, and your district represented, District Five, and your parks and all of that good stuff.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
To, to my Mayor Pro Tim, I do, I do have a young lady that's in your district. Um, I will forward o- over her information to you, maybe contact her or what have you.
Okay, okay. That sounds good. Thank you.
All right, and then if I can get support to. And City Clerk, I know, I don't know if, he told me that he did it electronically. Have you received information for Sandra King?
I don't think I've received that one yet, Mayor.
Sandra, okay. I'm looking to appoint him to the Beautification Committee, so I'll make sure that I get back with him. And then move that along. Um, I would like to appoint Kevin Harrington to the Beautification Committee. I can have support for that.
I'll come on.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly, it's been moved and properly supported. Any discussion on that?
I thought we had did that at the last meeting with, uh, Tifa.
No, we just did. We just did Tifa, and I said that I wanted to do Kevin, but he didn't have his information in, so I wanted to make sure that we had that.
Mr. Mendice, he got appointed to both, to the Tifa, to the beautification.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Kevin just be out, you know, he out working with us anyway, so we just wanted to make sure that we got him appointed properly. Okay, so, roll call, please.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
No.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor, we have five yays.
All right, and then Antonio Robb, has he turned his information in yet? Because he, um, wanted to apply for the Beautification Committee as well. Okay, all right then, so we'll get those other two folks, so we can get them going.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was on you, but no.
Yeah, we know that the summer months are on top of us right now, so we definitely want to get those folks, spring and summer, get those people out working. If they want to work, we want all hands on deck. Anybody want to work, let's do it. All right, we'll ride along. Anything else that relates to boards and commissions?
Yeah, um, for, for Tifa, we need a minimum of seven people on the board to meet. And with the addition of, um, Mayor Pro Tim's Howard individual, uh, that brings us to six. So is there anyone else that may be interested? Uh, also, uh. Ronald Liscombe, who is our lawyer for our Tifa Board, said. You can appoint me to that board if needed as well. Um, I'm just trying to figure out how to get us to the threshold to have the meeting.
Appoint it. Oh, boy.
Don't move.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, roll call, please. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I couldn't get off mute. Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
So that makes, so, so, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, does that conclude all the members? For Tifa?
What, what you need, VJ, I mean, to have a.
The minimum Tifa, uh, board amount is seven, so now we have seven. The maximum is thirteen.
Okay, so if I want to add, we want to add some more, we could.
I would prefer that. Like, I think just to be safe, I would like to, you know, add another one or two individuals.
Okay, because you know, um, Pastor Overman, Jean Overman, she just, uh, reached out to me and said that she was interested in, um, getting on a Tifa. If that's something, you know, the council, if I can, uh, uh, if I can appoint her today.
Don't move.
Uh, uh, there's support, so it's been moved and properly supported. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, motion carries. All right, let's move right along. Anything else? Boards and commissions. And thank you, council. Just want to get our people, especially when they want to volunteer, we want to definitely get them going, so we still need to reach out. Let's get that Youth Commission filled up. It's gonna be really good if we got some folks that, you know, want to serve in those districts. All right, brings us to previous business. What's your pleasure?
Um, consideration and approval of the FY twenty-twenty-one budget amendment, which needs to be removed from the table, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, what's your pleasure?
Don't move, Mr. Chair, to remove from table.
Has been moved and properly supported, removed from the table. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
And Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, moving right into it. Brian, VJ.
Um, so, yeah, the twenty-twenty-one budget amendments, uh, we reviewed with council. Uh, in our sessions, uh, was it three, four weeks ago now? Um, and similarly to the twenty-twenty-two budget, we went line by line. And what we tried to do was we took where each line, each general ledger line was at. And then we tried to figure out and project where would it end up at, at June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Um, so when we went through this with council, we had a number of changes. Um, and we provided council a lot of detail, and I know it was a lot, so I appreciate. All of you sitting through six hours of that. Um, so what we're looking for here is, uh, council's approval. On the, uh, budget amendments that we presented. Which, just to recap real quickly, for the general fund, would increase the revenue by one point eight million. And would increase the expenditures by one point six, seven million, our net effect on fund balance. For this would be one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one in the general fund.
An increase to fund balance.
Correct, yep. Thanks, Brian.
And that, and that. Go ahead, Councilman Shaw.
No, excuse me. Now, that, that, that adds the shot in the arm that we're going to get from the state, correct?
Yep, so inclusive in there is the, uh, one million dollars in FD-CVT grants from the state. As well as, uh, three hundred thousand dollars from the county for CDBG grants.
Councilman Shaw, you weren't referring to the cares that many, were you? You talked about the shoppers.
We didn't even get that yet, so that's going to probably be.
Okay. Yeah, that includes the, the, the budget, the actual ones that we were looking to, to get, to get back.
Yeah, I mean, he, he, basically, I was looking for the, the total net of one thirty-seven, eighty, eight hundred and thirty-one. That's, that's what I was looking for.
Yep, yep, that's, that's inclusive in there.
Councilman Shaw, you had the floor. Do you have any other questions as it relates to this?
Oh, no, that's all I had. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
BJ? BJ? Okay, when you, when we normally get a budget amendment, the money has already been spent. So I think it's kind of confusing, uh, you are, we, you are projecting. What you think we're gonna do in revenues as well? Up until, up until, because see, that is something that we never, we never had that before. So this is different, because we've always known budget amendments is money has already been spent.
Okay.
So the, so the expenditures, the expenditure side is what all the monies that have been spent, correct?
No, so it's the projection for the full twelve-month period. So it, it would be the projection from July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. So we have to project what it was for the last three months of this fiscal year.
And, and some of them may have already been over budget, and the amendment just gives us that much more to get us through to the end. So Mayor Pro Tim, it is a combination of things that, on the expense side. Things that already went over budget, and now we're fixing the budget, or things that we think. Between now and June thirtieth would go over budget without this amendment. So it's a combination of those two things. And on the revenue side. For the most part, it's things that we already received, got in the door. There's not that much that's prospective over the rest of the fiscal year. The big ticket items are those grants that were already spent, have already requested the drawdown. And now we're waiting to receive the money.
Okay. So if in fact that we do this estimate for the next couple of months, what happens if that's not accurate? Then what?
Good question. So on the revenue side, if we're high, if we're low, really no harm done. On the expense side, if the amendment isn't high enough today. Hopefully, we'll have a chance to, to bring back a small amendment between now and June thirtieth. If we don't have time to do that, or if we don't know, because sometimes we don't know what our June expenses are until July or August. But if you happen to go over budget, it's not the end of the world, it's not ideal. But, uh, it would be a violation of the Budget Act, and there would be a comment in your next audit that you went over. Which you do most of the time, and most cities do. Almost every client I work with will get at least one comment in their audit that they went over budget on something.
Right, I understand. You know. On the, on, on the revenue side, it's such an estimate guess on some things, and some things we may not get. But, uh, what hit us really hard is the COVID, um, as far as in our police and fire, uh, over time. Um, that hit us hard. That's, that's, you can't predict that, because it can either go either way. But at the same time, I know you did stress to us that this budget amendment needs to be approved tonight. But in fiscal year FY twenty-one, twenty-two. The money that they, and some of these budget line items that were approved without our knowledge. We can't take those out and deduct it from fiscal year FY twenty-one, twenty-two.
And Mayor Pro Tim Howard, I'm, I'm, I truly apologize. I just, why I want to get to the crux of it, what, what, what line items are you talking about that weren't?
I'm not gonna go over them now, because, I mean, it is a third. I'm not gonna go, I'm not gonna go over them now. But I will go over them when we have more study sessions on FY twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two budget. But this is what I'm gonna do, and I'm not saying with the rest of my colleagues. But it was told to us that this what we can do, because when we set standards. And then it turn around and we, they go over on some of the, some of the stuff we can't predict.
Right.
But when we set standards on certain items, budget line items, and if it comes back and goes without our knowledge. Then that shouldn't happen. There should be some repercussions, but I'm not gonna say that tonight, but I'm just asking, this is what I'm doing. I will approve this budget amendment tonight, but going forward, I'm gonna, whatever I didn't like, that went over budget. I'm gonna deduct it from FY twenty-one, twenty-two's budget. But, and I'm done. Thank you, Brian.
Welcome.
And, and Mayor Pro Tim, that, you know, really, I, I really appreciate that. However, I do want to know, and if you could just, if you could put it in. Writing, send it to the entire council and the treasurer along with, uh, Plan Moran, that way we can focus in on what you're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, and I haven't had time to, and we went over the budget. But when I go in from line, from line item at home, sitting at home, I will be sending you, uh, sending you and my colleagues. An email telling you what I'd like to be taking out this budget for going forward.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's what I was asking. Thank you, and that's for the.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right. I, I knew I heard some other folks that had some questions or comments. As it relates to the budget amendments.
I, I have, I have one, um.
Go ahead, Councilmember Williams.
I, I have one, and, and, and no meaning that I don't, uh, want to always make a statement that. I, I think Jerome, one of the hottest, you know, as a director in his department, they work hard to get things done, okay? And we got other, um, uh, departments that works pretty hard in the city. But sometimes, you know, you have to kind of like, put a halt to things in order to continue to move forward. Okay? Uh, I understand project manager, I mean, that, that, and, and, and Patrick know, uh, know good and well what a project manager does. He, he, he's a taskmaster. He gets the job done, okay? And. I feel that, I feel that this, at this point, we, we should be cautious. See, everybody say, well, hey, put them on, you know, don't make no difference, but when we run it, when we run a big deficit, when a deficit come in there. Or we have to do something, industry structures that we, all we got to do around the city, and we run into a whole, and the department, see, no, nobody, they, they gonna blame us. Okay? But then, you know, so what I'm looking at, you know, and I got a lot of respect from this, uh, Sister Faison and, 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 uh, Daniels. But it's things that they have to look at, that when it, when it comes down to putting a halt on some things, you know, it's something that we can hold off on. It's, it's fine. It's nothing says urgent move that we gotta do, project manager. Okay? That's just for that incident. It's gonna come, other, other departments where it's gonna come, where. We, we're gonna want to put certain people in there. We're not gonna be able to do it. You see what I'm saying? We gotta use the kind of money that we get, okay? Then, like I said, be worried about that corporate money, one thing about that corporate money, that's a one-shot deal. And when that money gone, we back at the same pace. So I got a lot of respect for them, but they need to look at the total picture, not just have.
And councilman, I just want to, uh, like, uh, make sure we understand the delineation between. The twenty twenty-one budget amendments, like, what we're seeking here is the amendments to the current fiscal year budget. Which wouldn't have the project manager in it. And, uh, the twenty twenty-two budget is where the project manager would be in. And like, I mean, like I said, I've written that down, we can, we can certainly discuss. But what we're looking at here is just the budget amendments to be passed, not the, not the, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget.
Thank you, VJ. Yeah, so Councilmember Shaw?
Is Reverend Williams done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, all right. Um, can we get, can we get the document after we approve this budget amendment? Of what we came close to with the projected version of that one thirty-seven at the end of the fiscal year? Would that come out, uh, July one, or do you need a couple months for that?
We would probably need a little bit of time, uh, so typically closed will last, uh, say, two, three weeks, but even beyond that. Um, I think we have, is it Brian, ninety days to book into the current fiscal year for items received?
We have sixty days to record revenue back into the fiscal year. But to know the, the final expenditure number, which I think is the one that you're really most concerned with. We're not gonna know that until probably Labor Day-ish or later. Uh, your audit doesn't start until sometime in October, and we're working straight through the summer up until that date to get everything recorded in the proper year. Um, we could certainly, I, I, while I said we won't have a final number until the audit. We can certainly provide updates as part of that, uh, monthly reporting package. That can then give you an update as to where June thirty is at that point in time.
Okay, that's good. That's, that's what I'm looking for. Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir. Any other questions, comments from the council?
Um, yes, mayor. I believe you told me that my question that I asked earlier should be asked now, about the severance package?
Yes.
That was in the budget amendments. I don't believe we voted on that, and I think. That there are several other things that I don't remember off the top of my head, that council wasn't involved in. Now, if this money was spent without council's knowledge or approval. I think it's really disingenuous to ask us to backfill what we had nothing to do with initially.
So, just like you pointed out, the, uh, the severance package thing, that we can speak to that. I might need you to point out those other things that you're talking about as well, that way we can speak to those as well, so. If I could, uh, I think David Jones is on the line. David, if you could speak to that as it relates to, uh, the severance package with Mrs. Jordan. What was our thinking behind that?
Oh, as, as far as I recollect, she wasn't given a severance package. Basically, it was an agreement to sever terms with her. Uh, it was, it came to my understanding that you had lost confidence in Ms. Jordan and being the mayor. That's your prerogative, but she agreed to leave, to resign, and in exchange for resigning, she, she agreed to stay on. As the planner for a hundred and twenty days, I believe, maybe sixty, a hundred and twenty days. And she, she didn't get a, um, she got paid her normal pay for tho- that period of time less. Taxes and insurance, et cetera, and she agreed, as part of the agreement, the separation agreement was that she would. Assist the transition in the planning department, assist any special projects as it related to the. Rec Center, assist Caitlin Hines, and so it was a separation agreement in exchange for her agreement not to sue the company. So her salary was equivalent to the hundred and twenty days. That she agreed to continue in that role. It wasn't a severance package.
Twenty thousand dollars is what we pay people for, um, what is it, a hundred and twenty days, you said?
That was, that was the rate equivalent to her salary on a monthly basis for those four months.
And am I correct in saying that any type of contract or agreement like that, we, uh, council should be informed of?
Well, I think council certainly should be informed, but again. The decision to hire or fire was of the, of the director, was at the mayor's, that's at the mayor's discretion. But again, she worked, and I don't know if you're informed of every decision that the administration makes with its department heads. But she agreed to continue on for that period of time.
Okay, but the charter says, and there have been tons of charter violations. Says that the mayor shall advise council. When, uh, hiring and terminating. And none of that was done with this, I'm sorry, what? Did I, did I speak out of turn?
No, ma'am, but you were advised with Miss Jordan, though, as it relates to Miss Jordan.
No, sir. No, sir. I mean, I, I wasn't, maybe you advised the rest of them. Oh, no, you did say Adriana decided to move on. Those were the only words that I remember, and that was at a council meeting, so we can go back and find that if you like. But I'm just saying, once again, once again.
Here you are with that again.
Huh?
No, I'm just here to do what you got to say.
Okay, I'm just saying, once again, it's that transparency thing that I have an issue with. Not knowing what's going on, and then asking to approve what went on. Now, I will, I, I, that's just the way, they're rules, okay? And when we don't follow the rules, there are problems that exist, and that's all I'm saying at this point. So, um, about that.
I would just ask, ma'am, please, forward those to me in writing. What are those, you know, those issues that you're having, um, as it relates to pointing those things out, so I can answer those things, because. You know, you said a lot of things publicly, and, uh, some of them are over-exaggerated, you know, and you're very smart.
And point out to me which ones those are.
Well, I mean, just for instance, as it relates to just the nine department heads leaving the city, and it's not a true statement, so.
Well, tell me how many have left then?
We, we, let's, let's go down. So you have police is still here, fire is still here, treasury is still here. We know that the clerk is actually leaving, uh, human resources, um, we, that position, we're about to fill that position. Um, IT, we about to fill that position, so that's two, three. Um, you have the DPW, Roma's still here. Parks and Rec, we had an issue with the Parks and Rec Director, where we had to let him go. And then the Building Department, we transitioned that into in-house, and then the Planner. Um, is the other person that, uh, just recently resigned. So you have one, two, three, four, five positions.
Okay, well.
They will all be filled, um, it's just, you know, unfortunately.
Talking about the people who have worked here for years who have left, and I have Planning Adriana, uh, Sarday. Darren, the old treasurer, Deja, Phineas, uh, Gina Clark. Uh, Yolanda left, and she's not a department head, but essential personnel. Rhonda, Caitlin, Alex Legion, and Felicia, and Craig.
Yeah, you, you mentioned a few people that are not department heads, and then, of course, you know, with transition, things happen. Um, with people, as it relates to the, the new administration coming in, and let me just speak frankly to that. When I came into the position, I had a lot of people advise me to, um, look at bringing in my own team, and we know that that kind of happens. But when COVID hit, I was in office for four months, and we still been in COVID. Unfortunately, people have left because me, maybe my personality, my management style, however that is. Um, I'll take responsibility for that, and then because of the demand for work, there's just a lot of work here in the city of Easton that needs to be done. Some of those people that you mentioned left a lot of work for us to get done, and that's why we're in the position that we're in now. So I want to work with you, councilwoman, and move forward. I, you know, I don't want to point fingers, I, I try not to do that. Um, at the same time, I just can't keep taking the brunt of, uh, you know, this display from you every time that we have a meeting. So, you know, pick up the phone, I've called you several times, you haven't answered. Um, as it relates to email correspondence, you really don't send anything to me, and anything that I put out, you don't reply, so. You know, let's make it be a two-way street. I want to work with you, not against you. This is about the city of Inxton, and I know that you love the city of Inxton, you have a passion for it, and that's support whatever you're trying to do. But at the end of the day, I just can't just keep sitting by, and as we just keep going back and forth with this and not moving the city forward.
All I've been trying to do since day one is get transparency.
Okay.
And I have not. So, if that, if that changes, we have no problems. I'm like you. I want to do what's best for the city of Inxton, but I can't do it if I don't know what's going on.
Okay, but it's a lot of things that you, you know, that we talked about, that, you know, maybe you. Don't have an understanding that we can have further conversation on, so we're all on the same page, and I apologize. I know we have a lot going on here in the city of Inxton. And I take full responsibility for what's happening now, and us moving forward, so I truly apologize to the community, to you. As it relates to me being, if you feel like I'm not transparent. However, I want to do the best that I possibly can to be transparent and answer those questions, and hold me accountable to whatever you need to. So we can move the city forward, and that's what I'm about.
Okay, my next question, where the, um, where the budget amendments are concerned?
Yes, ma'am.
Is, um. The building comparisons, we are gonna get those from when you, uh, brought building back inside and. Um. Out, where we were outsourced before.
Yes, we definitely will make sure that we give you that.
And we're gonna get that before we have to actually vote on this, or we have to vote on this tonight.
Well, this is, you're talking about the budget amendments, I don't think that has anything to do with the. Building Department comparison, I mean, ma- you know, of course, with the numbers and it is, but this is stuff that. You know, of course, we're trying to balance the budget and have true numbers, as we're looking forward to, you know, move this budget forward, so. You know, of course, we're trying to balance the budget and have true numbers, as we're looking forward to, you know, move this budget forward, so.
Right.
We'll make sure that we get that for you, though.
Okay, so my next concern is, um. Never in the history that I remember have we ever needed a one point seven million dollar budget amendment. So that seems to me that what we projected last year was way out of whack. How do we, how do we go about making sure? And then just because it falls in line with this too, is that the, um. When I ask about the current budget, and I was told you all just moved some numbers over. Well, if, because I asked about the department heads, um, telling you what their budget was, where did you get the numbers from? When in the, in the budget, in the session, so you said you just moved mu- numbers over from last year. Because, you know, of that, so I'm wondering if we're heading towards the same, uh, large. Overlay that we, we have now, if we did that, because obviously. The people who didn't vote for the budget last year, this amendment bears out their concern.
Yes, ma'am, and I truly understand that, and let me say that, you know, as it relates to the vacancies that you, you pointed out. Um, for, you know, the Human Resource Department, um, you know, the IT Department is actually a consulting group. Um, they're not necessarily in charge of their budget, you know, we pay them, you know, each month for services rendered. Um, the Rec Department doesn't have, uh, you know, a actual, um, director there. And then Mr. Don being new in the position for the Building Department, we will have those numbers to you as it relates to the budget. We, I was having some technical issues with getting him BNA access, so he could, um, give that information to you. So the ones that we were talking about as relates to the projections were those ones, um, that we needed to fill based off of. What we, you know, projected in our budget for la- well, actually what was spent last year. You know, compared to what we're looking to spend this year, so we pretty much kept those numbers conservative as possible. Based off of what we spent from last year's budget in those departments, where we didn't have department heads to weigh in. Well, you know, I just want to mention like our core services, uh, Mr. Vivin's, uh, Chief Riley. Um, along with, uh, Chief Hubbard, um, you know, the city clerk, we've been engaged treasury with them. As it relates to their budgets being submitted to us and those other numbers that, you know, they sent to, to us, um, here as, as the mayor. And, and then me and Vijay went through them ourselves together, and then we went, talked to Plan Moran and looked at some other things. And what you're seeing before you now is the recommended budget from the administration, so. Um, after, you know, going back with you all and whatever, you know, you're asking for, for us to move around, however we can do that. And we want to be able to present the, the, the actual proposed budget from the mayor. To the council to approve, so. We're working through that and trying to do, you know, again, be as, you know, clear as possible on what's been happening. Then also to, to make sure that we're moving in a direction where the numbers are real and they're not air. Like you've said before in the past, so. We, we know that we want to make sure that, you know, you have hard numbers and you, you, we know where things are going to. We don't have all these budget amendments, and let me say this, we typically do budget amendments in January. And we know Mr. Carrington moved on to another job, and we brought in, uh, Vijay to do the, to do the work of the treasurer, and. We just with COVID and everything else that was happening, we got behind, so. We, we apologize for that happening. Things happened out of our control. However, these are here now for us to move forward so we can have a sound budget moving forward for, uh, year twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I can't hear you, ma'am. You got muffled.
I said, okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Councilman Shaw.
Now, I know that, I know that, um, uh, Brian may mention about for the next year, it won't come into. Uh, sometime between Labor Day with the hard numbers of twenty twenty-two, but can we go back to. This last year's budget from the audit report that we did get right now to look at those comparisons?
Brian, speak to that, please, sir.
Councilman Shaw, you, you want to compare to FY twenty?
Yes, so we can, can we look at the audit to see? You know, whether we went over or under with those hard numbers? Will it be in the audit?
So, yeah, actually, if you have a copy of your FY twenty audit available, I'm actually looking at it right now.
Yeah.
Uh, general fund budget is on page twenty-three.
That would give us a hard number, right?
Yes, so on page twenty-three, you'll see the first column is the original FY twenty budget. The second column is the final amended, so I don't remember how many amendments there were from beginning to end, but it gives you the very beginning. Compared to the very end, and then the third column is the actual numbers, then the fourth column is the difference between. The actual final numbers and the final amended, so on the expenditure side. This year's, this amendment that, that's presented to you today for, uh, your approval, it's almost exactly the same. That, as the total change, so last year's original budget expenses were thirteen. Point four five five million, the final amended was fifteen point one million, a difference of one point six.
I see that.
And the actual expenditures ended up being just under two hundred thousand dollars less than the budget.
Okay, yeah, so that gives us a hard look at, you know, the last year and, and what we amended for that, for that budget there. So this would be the same process for the next fiscal year budget, once we get to it in twenty twenty-two. We should be able to look at the audit and be able to get those hard numbers as well, correct?
Yes, yep.
All right.
And fingers crossed the audit will be filed before Christmas in twenty twenty-one.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the, um, the twenty twenty-one budget amendments. There's support?
A move, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, I couldn't hear. Who moves?
Was, I need a motion, I'm sorry, Councilman Shaw.
Motion to accept. The twenty twenty-one budget amendment?
There's support? Discussion.
Discussion. My computer froze, and you were asking, was there any more comments, and I couldn't.
Oh, yeah, well, go ahead. This is it right now, Councilman Chisholm, go ahead.
All right, so I think we should approve this budget amendment, but I believe we should remove some items inclusive of those that are. In here that violate the charter and purchasing policy, and I'll state them here. Uh, one, AT&T bill, and it said the discounts were lost, and we were never informed until we got the amendment. Of why they were lost, or where was that with even, uh, mediation with the lawyer's office, so, uh, we should remove the overage. The Planner Director Severance or Transition into a Consulting Slot, remove it. The Economic Development, um, take it back to fifty-three thousand from fifty-six thousand, it was a three thousand dollar change, remove it. Uh, the Building Department, I saw there was like a fourteen thousand, one hundred thirty-nine dollar change. Uh, so I'm not sure if we're over budget or not. If we're over budgeting that, remove it. Building Maintenance, it said, uh, to sell the city car. I don't think we should sell the city car because we're not going to be. Then we'd have to be paying mileage to city employees to do city work, remove it. Planning Tech, we never filled that position once, um, Ms. Heinz moved up to the Planner Director, remove it. We were paying two people out of the payroll line item, and we were voting on the payroll contract. Um, which is going to eliminate the HR Generalist and Payroll, Payroll Clerk position from the budget, which will save money, remove it. Plus, in the summer of twenty twenty, when COVID did hit spring, summer. We never did any layoffs during the COVID nineteen pandemic, which would have saved the city money as the employees were at home. As we figured out how to continue moving forward in a virtual and safe capacity. I know that the, um, funds coming from the American Rescue Plan will help backfill those funds. As they were COVID related, and we still had employees working and whatnot, but. I, like I said, I think we should approve this budget amendment, but I can send this list over of everything I just stated, but some of that stuff should be removed. Because they do violate the charter, council never voted on it, and they violate the purchasing policy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you're welcome, but to make a statement like, um, it violated the purchasing policy, can you point out what, what were those things? Because I don't want to violate anything, and it, it comes from me, so let's just say what it is, you know, I'm okay with that. You know, what, what were, what were the things that we violated, so I want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
I had to go back and interject each, um, particular subsection in each one of these items that I listed, like a previous email that I sent before. That states which, you know, section of the charter, which section of the purchase policy, I have no prob- I have no problem with doing that, but I'll do that.
Thank you. Thank you. Do that for me, then that way I can answer back and, you know, where we're all, you know. Again, if it's something that I'm doing, believe me, please stop me before we get to council meetings. On, you know, on, you know, every two weeks, in between, give me a call, whatever. You hear something out there in the community that's swirling around something that I'm doing or whatever, please let me know, because I don't want to violate the charter. That's the last thing that I'm setting out to do, is to violate the charter. Um, you know, if we get to council meeting, it's something that you guys see, you guys don't have a problem putting on the brakes, I don't either, so. I want us all be moving forward together going into this next fiscal year, so if you could send that to me, Councilman Chisholm, I really would appreciate that. I'll get you some answers back, but, um, I don't know how we move forward tonight. Um, with those things that you're talking about to remove, um, is that something? That, uh, yeah. Something that, you know, we can look at quickly. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
We can put it back on the table if, if it satisfies the body, you know, to make sure that they can get their questions answered. I mean, I have no, no problem with that. But I, I do want Brian to give that number of the page of the audit once again.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, uh, you know, it's, it's okay to do that, because, you know, we can put it forth on our next. Meeting, you know, I think it just needs to be approved, Vijay Wright, it just needs to be approved and concurrent with the budget, with the new budget, or. Before, you know, we adopt a new budget.
Um, Brian, do, do we have a timeframe in which we need to approve these budget amendments?
The amendment, the amendment only has to be approved before June thirtieth. We just want to make sure it gets passed before the clock strikes on the new year.
Yep, so I would say let's put it back on the table, because there's a lot of things being said, and I want to make sure that I'm able to answer those things, and then we can move forward from there.
Right. I, I definitely want to give you time to be able to, you know, wrap your arms around that, you know, what was stated, so. Uh, and then be, uh, transparent and also, you know, to make sure my colleagues are very satisfied with, with these amendments. Now, Brian, can you give me that number to the page of the audit once again?
Sure, page twenty-three of the twenty twenty audit.
Okay, thank you, sir, and, uh, I would like to change my motion to motion for table, tabling this to the next meet.
Support.
Good. Roll call, please.
Oh, uh, I didn't get that, I didn't get.
We're going to table, we're going to table this, uh, Councilman Williams, and I'm fine with that. It makes sense, we can move things forward. Roll call.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yeah, uh, yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
And Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yeas.
All right, motion carries. Go ahead. Uh, no, not right now, uh, Councilman Williams, we're going into new business.
Okay.
And I just want, I just want to make a, uh, statement that, that. Them, uh, courses that Steve's saying we're in violation of the charter before to all of us.
Yes, yeah, and Councilman Chisholm is pretty good at that, so we gonna, he gonna make sure he get us all that information. Yeah, okay, Steve. Councilman Chisholm?
Yes, sir.
All right, yep, cool, all right, thank you. Steve, you know we not that savvy, all of us, you know, putting the thumbs up like, you know. Talk to us, man, I got you. All right, all right, go ahead, City Clerk, run us through it.
All right, item A is consideration and approval of the deficit elimination plan to be provided to the state of Michigan.
Go move, Mr. Chair.
There's support?
For?
Discussion? Here in unroll call, please.
Councilmember Washington? Yes. Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
No.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Mayor, we have five yeas.
All right, motion carries, item B.
Item B is consideration and approval of an agreement for professional and technical planning advisory services. Um, and the new date is now May fifteen, twenty twenty-two, and each party can terminate for any reason by any party.
And next, your company is McKenna and Associates.
The company is McKenna and Associates, I'm sorry.
So move.
Moves, there's support?
Thought that, um, I'm, I'm not sure if I'm incorrect or not, um, Councilwoman, um. Kim, didn't she say she went from six months to a year? Am I wrong?
Yeah, so that's what we said, a year.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and this is all as a, as needed basis, you know, costs will be covered. We have a city planner in to catch it right now. We're going to be doing some interviews, and hopefully I can reach out to, um, one or two of you from this body to join me. Of course, Steve Chisholm, you have no, you have to, because you're the Planning Commissioner Chair, so you'll be on that. Um, interview process as well, so we'll be looking to bring that person in within the next, you know, few weeks if we're successful. So, yep, so it's a year, that's the motion. Are you okay with that, Councilwoman Washington?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, all right.
Second, Mayor?
In the, in the, yeah, that would be the second, that would be our second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, discussion on that. You know, we had some already, um, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
And Councilmember Watley? Um, I'm sorry, did we already have discussion?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I did say discussion on that.
Okay, I'm sorry then, okay, go ahead, yes. Okay, uh, Mayor, we have six yeas.
All right, motion carries, item C, please.
Consideration and approval of one offer to purchase a vacant parcel. On the west side of Beach Daily between Yale Street and Norfolk Street, which is legally described as duly noted. In the amount of five hundred dollars to Octavia Smith to build a home.
Wish you pleasure.
So move.
Is there support?
Support.
Removed and properly supported discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I, um, asked earlier and, um, and I probably said.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard, I don't know if you be looking away or something, or where your speaker is located at, but you be coming through clear, and then you come back muffled.
Okay, it must be the internet in here, I'm not sure.
Oh, you hear me right now? Yeah, you good right now.
Okay, but I, I would like to table this until we get, um. Assessor to tell us what this property is worth, because on page one oh eight, it's got land dimensions. Two seven oh point zero zero by one twenty point zero zero. And, uh, square feet, I'm thinking it's thirty-two thousand four oh nine, I'm not sure what that means.
Okay.
So I would like to guess, not, you know, I don't have any problem with, uh. Anybody. Make sure since this is, uh, this piece of land that's on Beach Daily is prime, real prime land. And I just want us to be selling it for the. Correct dollar amount. I don't want to cheat the city of Inxton.
Okay, the maker of the motion, are you willing to make, change your motion to table this? Maker the motion? Who moved it?
Councilmember Chisholm?
I'm sorry, yes, I will change my, um, motion to table.
Until the next meeting?
Until the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll get that information, and also too, we'll get with our Realtor, along with, uh, Tracy and Jenny, who's a special project manager that handles. That stuff with the Realtor, and then also too, the person that's looking to buy that particular, uh, property, and let them know what's going on. And, uh, get that information back to the council.
Mr. Chair, and al- also, can we, can we add that to the checklist as well? I mean, maybe something that we may come across, uh, another time as well.
What, what is that to add to the checklist, sir?
The, the assesses cost.
Oh, yeah, 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 for sure, we can definitely do that.
Because you did, you, you missed the checklist, we did get the checklist, but that's one of the items that's not on there.
We'll, we'll add another line item to that, if I'm hearing what you're saying. I'm in this table to add the value, the assessed value.
Yes.
Is that what we're saying?
Yes, so if we come across it again, you know, we'll have that information.
Okay.
So that, uh, listen, 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 ma'am, it, there probably more than one, one lot?
It's one lot. And we're going to come back to you and make sure we. And we're gonna come back to you and make sure we have it all we broke out for you and the cost for it and everything. Um, as it relates to the assessment and, and let me say this, and I'm going to encourage every time we're on the call. That the city of Inchester. Owns over a thousand vacant lots in our city. That we're not getting taxes from. So when we talk about revenues coming in, we need to sell these properties. To people because the city of Inchester is not a realtor. We, we, we're not a land. We shouldn't be a landlord outside of the properties that we own and we operate. Um, because that increases liability. You have, uh, Mr. Bivens Department is already stretched thin from, as we heard earlier, from forty people down to eight people that's. Trying to cut all the grass in the city, the vacant lots and everything. Um, you know, we need to get these things off of our books. So I'm encouraging, you know, folks to go online, look at what we have for sale. Uh, Mr. Trey has put that up on the, on the property for property for sale in the city of Inchester. And, you know, give us a call. You know, we know we have a backlog of properties right now. And we're working out a process to be able to bring those things to the council quickly and more efficiently. So. Dialogue like this is what we need to have. So I'll be adding more to the checklist, the assessed value of the property. Uh, once it's sold, because right now we're not collecting anything. So you don't want to hold on to property here in the city of Inchester. All right, the motion was to table. Roll call, please.
Sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, motion carries and we will revisit that next time around. All right, next, please.
Item D is consideration and approval to change the medical employee benefit coverage carrier from priority health to half. While continuing with Manquinn Vance as the city's broker. This approval should be subject to final legal approval of the contract.
Wish you pleasure.
So move.
Support.
Support. It's been moved and properly supported discussion.
Yes, question. Is, is Vijay could, uh, explain the savings that is going to come out of this? And that there will be no change of service for the public?
Yep, certainly. Um, so as part of our, uh, analysis for the employee benefit plan renewal. Um, we did explore other options in terms of, uh, benefit plans, carriers and, uh, brokers. And what we decided was the best option for the employees was staying with Manquinn Vance as the broker. And changing the carrier to half. And what that would do is it would provide the same level of coverage to all the employees. But it would result in a, uh, a sixty-six thousand dollar savings during this next year. Eight thousand dollars of which, of which is a, uh, a one-time credit.
Does that answer your question, Councilman Shaw?
Yes, that's all I have. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Here in unroll call, please.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard. Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Washington.
You're all leaving us. The bow is getting weak.
Can you hear me?
Council, I can hear you now.
I'm sorry.
I need to hear your vote. Yes. Okay. Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, motion carries moving right along.
Item E is consideration and approval to change life and disability employee benefit coverage carrier. From the standard to the Hartford. While continuing with Matt Quinn Vance as the city's broker. This approval should be subject to final legal approval of the contract.
Wish you pleasure. Wish you pleasure. I need your help over there. Some, I hear some, some, some trying to come through. Do we have a motion? And is there support?
Support.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim, did you say some move?
Yes.
Okay. Constable Chisholm, support?
Yes.
Discussion. Vijay, you wanted to jump in there real quick and do the same thing you did.
Exactly. So as, uh, part of our employee benefit plan, uh, renewals. Uh, we also considered the life and disability employee benefit coverage. Um, again, we will stay with our broker, Manquinn Vance. And what we found to be a good option was the Hartford is providing the same level of service as the standard. But we will save, uh, fourteen thousand dollars annually.
Just keep adding those savings up, Vijay. I like that.
Open to.
Any other? Comments, questions?
Are these contracts for? Any specified length of time or they just go on? Until we find a new carrier like we did the last time, uh, this time?
This, uh, and Kimberly, correct me if I'm wrong here. Um, I think is a two-year, uh, rate lock.
Okay, thank you.
Kimberly's on mute too, by the way, Vijay, just in case you wanted to.
Oh, she wasn't on her head yet.
Okay, good.
And Mr. Chair.
For the general public, if, go ahead, Kimberly.
No, I was just gonna say, yes, this, uh, particular contract is a two-year contract and the contract would ever green. Um, but that's assuming you wanted to renew with them. Um, when the contract does come up for renewal, we will review it again. Um, for competitiveness, go out to bid, make sure it is the right, um, solution for the city when that two-year contract is up.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilman Shaw.
I just want, I just want to make a comment that, uh, I hope that we are, and I know that we are. Looking at all of our vendors so that we can, you know, possibly bring these types of savings to.
Yes, sir. And we will. I mean, we're, we're trying to get through this portion of it with your help and, you know, everybody else will point out. You know, different things. However, you know, all of our vendors know, we've been talking about it. You know, from the attorney, everybody, they know that we're gonna, we're looking for savings. So we need to bring everything to the council. And then put it out to bid and, you know, we make a decision moving forward on everything that we're doing. Um, Steve, I haven't forgot about the trash stuff. So I, you know, collecting all of that stuff for you. As well. So you'll be seeing what the current trash vendor is doing compared to, you know, other communities and our cost savings with that. So. I'll be sending that information to you.
That's fine. I have a quick question if Councilman Shaw was finished.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
All right, uh, I know both of these contracts, the one we've already voted on, and this one are a, a big, uh, savings to the city. And Vijay has stated earlier, it's the same coverage for the employees. And with the savings, there's no increase or anything for the employees, right? It's still the same thing. It's just switching providers.
Right.
I don't know. I can't believe I keep getting back on mute. Let's get her. She's the person that, go ahead.
Yeah, so the benefits will be, um, the same with the HAP program and actually the, um. The employees through this open enrollment will actually see a little bit of a reduction over what they would have paid, um, with priority health through their payroll deduction. So it's a win for the employees as well. From a payroll contribution perspective to participate in the plan.
Oh, great. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments, as released either me? Here in unroll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
And Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, I like that.
Um, item F is consideration and approval to outsource payroll to DM Payroll. Approval should be contingent upon legal approval.
Councilman, Councilman Williams, do you need us to read that again? I mean, you were kind of leaning back. I didn't know what was happening.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you lost me. Can you read it one more time?
Sure. Item F is consideration and approval to outsource payroll to DM Payroll. And approval should be contingent on legal approval.
Wish you pleasure. Council, anybody? You had a motion?
Our motion is for discussion if someone supports it.
Support.
All right, discussion.
Um, I, you know, just for the record, as I stated earlier during orientation, I'm not for outsourcing jobs because we always encourage business owners. To hire Inchester and with outsourced, and we are not necessarily hiring Inchester. Um, but this is a great cost savings to the city. So therefore with that. At this point and, uh, different, um, opt-out clauses and whatnot that are in there. I am for it. So when we do hire someone for that position to get back on track, we can do it immediately.
Duly noted, sir. Councilman Williams?
I just want to know, this, this, this one we talking about, uh, with a, uh, uh. With the company?
Yes. And Brian is, is, I'm sorry, Brandon is on right now and he's going to speak to all of what they would be doing. So we're all on the same page. And then Vijay, after that, if you can just speak to what the state is going to contribute.
This is a company as needed, am I correct?
No, this is the pay, this is the payroll function. So Brandon, can we get you to unmute yourself?
I also wanted to make sure that we addressed the Councilwoman Watley's questions as well.
Yes.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I can, I can start with, uh, Councilwoman Wally's, uh, questions first. Um. So my name's Brandon. I, I apologize. I can't add my name onto Zoom for some reason. Brandon Sullivan. Um, I've been with DM Payroll Solutions for about seven years. Um, and as Vijay said, we started back, uh, in nineteen sixty-two as a part of the regional CPA firm, Dorm Menu. Um, and in addition to payroll processing and then outsourcing that payroll tax filing piece, uh, of the work there at the city. There are a number of HR components that will save, uh, administrative work and also help, uh, push things in a more paperless direction to streamline things. And get rid of that administrative burden, um. That, that has been on the city. Um, and so. One of the main ways that we're able to accomplish that is through our onboarding piece. So. Part of the payroll system is an electronic onboarding module. So that will allow you to eliminate paper, uh, for new hires and also we'll be reporting those new hires to the state of Michigan as well. Um, so certainly a savings there and also a benefit to the employees that they're able to, um, not have to deal with paperwork. Um, there's also a number of reporting components that we're able to automate a lot of things that are being done manually. Uh, one of those would be the workers' comp audit report. So, um, our system's able to calculate the exact workers' comp expense based on the payroll. Um, so I believe that was being done manually before, um, which is a, an incredible burden. Uh, but our software is able to take the data that we have and, and calculate those numbers exactly. Um, that is certainly a time savings there. We'll also be doing things like, uh, creating the payroll general ledger entry. So we'll be journalizing the payroll completely. So that won't be, have to be done manually. Um, create your fileable EO component one and component two reporting. As well as handling the Affordable Care Act filing. So we'll be tracking full-time equivalents and then filing all the form. Uh, ten ninety-four and ten ninety-fives at the end of the year as well. Um, so with, with those reporting capabilities, uh, there's a lot of things that are being done manually, the outsourcing, the work. Um, can free up that time and really eliminate, uh, at least temporarily the need to have someone in that position. There's also a number of, uh, employees self-service areas that'll be added that will help streamline things too. So. Employees will have access to a mobile app and website to view their pay stubs and W twos. Which will keep them from having to go to someone at the city there to get those, uh, forms and request those. And they can also, uh, request time off, uh, whenever the city's ready to implement that. That's part of the system as well. Um, again, eliminating the need for paper requests or, um, however that's currently being done manually. And also W four type changes. So if, uh, if employees have a name or an address change request, they'll be able to do that electronically. And our system will, uh, have them sign off on a new form W four whenever those changes are made. So that the city has accurate documents. And within the system, they'll be able to store those documents as well. Um, including, including other documents not related to payroll. Uh, if you would like to move. Paper personnel, uh, profiles online, our system will allow you to do that as well. Um, so a number of time savers, uh, both on the administrative side there at the city and, uh, benefits to the city's employees as well.
Thank you, Brandon. And I mean, just to add to that, um. Like the mayor alluded to, uh, we've discussed with the, the state of Michigan. And state of Michigan is waiting for, uh, if council approves it, they're looking to help us through, uh. September thirtieth at this time and then. Come October, we can revisit them helping with this cost as well. So it's, uh, it's, it's a win-win in the sense that, um. We can have a cost savings for something that we absolutely need, which is a payroll function. And it would also take off, uh, certain work off the plates of the HR manager or whoever else may do payroll. Uh, plus, as Brandon mentioned, they do certain HR specific items on top of just the payroll. Which then further helps our HR manager.
Hey, Councilwoman Wiley.
Oh, since you all were answering my questions, yeah, I'll go. What are, one question I ask about the Better Business Bureau, which I think is something we ought to do with businesses anyway. But I asked about that with their concern and also they talked about onboarding people. Do they do the same when people leave? Because we have a lot of people still listed in a lot of areas. Um, in the city that just aren't here anymore, that have nothing to do with the city. But if you, you know, pull up their name, they get, you know, they got like an email address or something like that. So I was wondering if that's something they could do. And I also wanted to know what their relationship, because I believe on the thing on the left-hand side said something about, um. Uh, um, um, they worked in conjunction with Emery HR. So what exactly is it they have going there?
Yes, Councilwoman. So, uh, firstly, with the Better Business Bureau, um, certainly you can take a look at our profile on the Better Business Bureau. Um, you'll see that we have zero complaints. Um, so hopefully that satisfies concerns there. Um, on, uh, as far as our relationship with Emery Benefits goes, um. We partner with Emery Benefits for, uh, at least in this case for the background checks. So any, any background checks that come through, uh, we would run those through Emery Benefits. Um, so that, that's the, the piece that works in conjunction with DM Payroll there.
Okay. And earlier, just because you said so many things that I like, okay? Um, is, is there a possibility that you work with another financial component? If you heard earlier, we were asking about, um. Uh. Bringing the, uh, the charge things in-house. That's not something you all do, is it?
It's not something we do internally. No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Councilwoman, I do, I do want to mention, um, we are not looking to add the background check services to our quote though. Um, so I know, I know you were asking because, uh, we saw the name Emery there. So I just wanted to clarify on that as well.
That's strictly on an as-needed basis. If you come to us and ask us to perform background checks for you, that's what we would do if, um. Typically, our engagements, our clients wouldn't even come to us for background checks. Um, it's just there as a resource if you, if you were to need it.
Okay, well then, once again, hearing that, that you don't do background checks. But if we were bringing on personnel for sensitive areas, we could ask on a case-by-case basis? For a background check?
That's correct.
And how much would that add to your quote?
So that, that would be part of Emery Benefits. Um, and that's something that, it depends on the level of background check you need. So there's a couple qualifiers there. Uh, but I can certainly, uh, get back with you or get back with Vijay, uh, regarding the cost for that.
All right, thank you.
And just.
Certainly.
Currently now, you know, Councilwoman, as you know, that, uh, uh, Inchester Police Department handles all of our background checks. So you, I definitely understand where you're going as it relates to sensitive, you know, whatever. We need to, we need them. We can use them. All right. Any other questions or comments as it relates to this item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um.
Yes, Councilwoman Howard.
Now, I know we, you know, you guys just hired the HR, uh, director. So what's gonna happen to the HR general? Is, is this gonna take the place of that?
Yes, ma'am. That's what we, that's what we've been, yeah, that's what we're proposing to do.
Okay, so because we up in the salary, well, okay. So will they have, are this, is this company bonded?
Go ahead, Brian. I mean, Brandon, I keep calling you Brian because of Brian, my other brands on the line. I'll get used to you, Brandon. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, we can certainly send you our, uh, insurance certificate.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to ask a question. If you could answer me on, um, this payroll process and service agreement, um, fifteen? Is thereafter, the price for the services covered by this agreement may be changed by DM? Is thereafter, the price for the services covered by this agreement may be changed by DM as set forth below? And it said DM shall have the right to increase all such prices at any time and from time to time after the date of this agreement.
Uh, yes, ma'am. That, that is how the agreement's written. We do have a three-year price lock in place for VJ. So rates would be guaranteed not to increase for three years. And after that, our, the way DM payroll handles increases, we don't, with the typical national payroll companies, they do have increases every year. With ours, we're not, you're not gonna see those type of increases. This is not an introductory rate. Even after those three years, it's not like the rate is going to jump significantly. But, but yes, the, the clause certainly is in the agreements.
Okay, so it, it raises after the three-year contract. Is what you're saying?
It could. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Anything else, Councilwoman Washington?
Nope, I'm done.
Okay. I just wanted to echo as it relates to Councilman Chisholm, you know, I'm definitely not for outsourcing a, a, anything. I think I'm in a unique position here at council. I, I've been in, under emergency financial manager position with the school district and also being part of council as it relates, as it related to the consent agreement when I was leaving off of council. So I know how hard this process is as it relates to, you know, looking at individuals and, you know, having to lay people off or not bring people back. However, you know, it's important for us to do what's best for the overall health of the, the community, for the organization. So, um, yeah, I definitely want to create more jobs and we definitely are still gonna be on our businesses to hire local. And, you know, when opportunities come up, hopefully we'll be digging ourselves out of this hole that we're in. Pretty soon with the decisions that we're making and we'll be able to bring people back, hire people, but then also have a plan to sustain those people. So. Floor. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I had a, I, I did another quick question and maybe this on here. Um, how much is saved yearly? With outsourcing?
VJ, I think you talked about that question earlier she asked you.
Yeah, so we have thirty-eight thousand in the budget for the HR generals, which eighteen is attributable to payroll. And that's eighteen, that's not including the fringes. So with this, we're looking at, what, just under, just over nine thousand? I'm sorry, let me pull this right page back up. Yep, so just over nine thousand and with what the state is going to commit to us, it'll be around fifty-six hundred or so net impact. And hopefully even less in October, the state continues that hope. So it, it's, uh, it could be a savings of up to eighteen thousand.
There's more than that though, VJ, because you, we're eliminating the entire generalist position.
Right.
It was gonna be more, it's gonna be more than that. It's, it's the forty thousand for the generalist position. And then you deduct the ten thousand for payroll. So you're talking about thirty, thirty thousand that will be savings to general fund. Is that correct?
Yeah, somewhere between thirty and forty, just depending on how much the, yeah, I, I assume the state helps us the full year.
Now, the state, if the state help us, they were talking about the entire thing, but I was just talking about if the state don't help us at all. We still own at thirty thousand and we were looking to take five thousand of that and put it into the HR manager's position um, to be able to up that salary to, you know, help with retention in that aspect.
Right.
Okay. Which I, okay, that answers my question from way earlier what I did ask. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. A question's being called for. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, motion carries. That brings us to public participation. We ask, of course, that you state your name for the record. That you limit your comments to a minute and you will be recognized by the chair. So Councilman Chisholm, if you can give him the rest, I'm gonna recognize and all that good stuff.
Yes, sir. Those who have joined us by the Zoom application or a video, please use the raise hand feature to be recognized. And like the mayor says, state your name. Once you are recognized, you have one minute to speak. Those who have joined us by telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. And same applies for you. State your name after the record. Once you're recognized, you have one minute to speak. Anyone who is watching on Facebook, you will have to dial in or join us by the Zoom application in order to speak during public participation. Mr. Mayor, this time we have three hands raised.
All right, eight-five-two-six, sir.
Okay, um, hold on, I'm trying to, oh, wait a minute. Troy, can you help me out here? I can't.
Let me see, I'll add some time mute. What are we doing, Steve?
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, I'm trying to get the caller to unmute now. They, they're not responding.
Okay, then let's have, uh, Councilwoman Mitchell.
Troy, are you able to do it? I can't unmute anybody on my ear.
Good evening.
Good evening, Councilwoman. Go ahead.
Good, I'm in the right place this time. This, uh, I am representing, uh, the Friends of the Leanna Hicks Public Library Foundation. I serve as a member of the Board of Directors. This happens to be Little Free Library Week. And in recognition of that, we would like to gift the city with three little free libraries. And this is a little free library. Currently have, um, a few around. There's one in the children's learning garden across the street from me. We, we take care of the learning garden every year and we added this last year. And it's wonderful to see people come and take books out of it to read and sit in the garden to read. There's one at Daily High, uh, Daily Elementary School and I know there's one at the rec center. But we have three that were made by a resident, Mr. Lance, um, in the city of Inkster. And we'd like to ask if one can be placed at City Hall. It is already constructed. Uh, we will make sure that it's painted attractively and we will keep it stocked with books and anyone who comes through can take a book and take it home and enjoy it.
Yes. Will it be installed and what do you need from us?
Well, I'll, I'll get with Mr. Lance and see what he says we'll need to do that. Usually it's just digging a hole with a little cement. So it just stands up well. So we'll depend on, uh, you tell us where it will be best placed and we'll, we'll get that done.
Yeah, well, you know, let's, let's get to it. Whatever you need, just call Director Bivens. He'll be the person that's overseeing it and making sure.
Very good. I will do just that. And thank you for setting our gift.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And the general public, definitely, we can get free books from City Hall. And if you haven't visited the library, it is beautiful. The library, you know, to library commission, to, uh, director of the library, to the friends of the library. You guys are doing a wonderful job there. So we just want to continue up the support and keep up the support for the library. All right, let's see here. Let's, uh, let's do Charles Blackwell.
Hello, my name is, uh, Charles Blackwell. I have comments about Mayor Patrick Andre Wimberly. The mayor is the real-life version of Jody off the movie.
All right, we're gonna keep that moving, guys. I would normally hear that, but you know, I'm the chair, I got the gavel. So we'll move forward. We won't have. It's just, it's enough is enough. Let's move forward. All right, did we get to, uh, let's do, uh, Denise Champagne.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Department Heads and Residents. Um, on behalf of Chief Hubbard and myself, I'd like to thank the Fire Department, Daryl Davis from DPS, the DPS staff, the commissioners and the staff of the Commission on Aging, along with the community volunteers who assisted us with the four vaccination clinics. We were able to put approximately fifteen hundred shots in the arms over the four clinics. We're currently working on, uh, getting vaccines at the residents of the senior buildings with the Wayne County Health Department and also the homebound residents of Inkster. So if you're a homebound resident and you need a vaccine, you can call our office to schedule a home visit. Three-one-three-five-six-one-two-three-eight-two or three-one-three-five-six-one-two-six-five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Champagne. All right, let's see here. Now, Council, do you see Councilman Chisholm? That, is that the two-six-five-two?
We could try again.
Let's, let's, let's try that, that we, you know, we want. And if you can't get in, you can always send us an email.
Drop a, on Facebook. Sent the unmute request to them, but sometimes they might have to manually unmute on their end. But.
So that's the eight-five-two-six. Okay, so we got the, who, who am I speaking with now? Two-six-five-two. Go ahead, Mr. Hudson.
Uh, I'd like to, man, this is the longest meeting I ever been on.
Well, good, thanks for joining us and sticking with us.
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to say something. I hope I'm not inappropriate for saying what I had to say. If y'all hire a new, uh, lawyer for the city, I hope it ain't the person who I'm thinking of. So I ain't no say his name. And, uh, I want to offer you a watery. You take both y'all out to dinner so y'all can discuss whatever y'all need to discuss and I'll pay for it. I didn't sound.
After, after COVID, I'm, I'm pretty sure Councilwoman Wiley ain't moving until after she feels safe to do that, but I'm up for it, for sure.
Oh, okay. That's all I had to say. Yeah, she didn't cut up too bad tonight. Yeah, but, but that's all I had to say.
All right, thank you, sir.
Coming back to the meetings.
Appreciate the comment. Appreciate you being involved.
Okay, yeah, have a good one.
You too. Thank you so much. All right, let's let's do Octavia Smith.
Hmm, not going through for her.
Technology, technology.
Send it, maybe, I, I mean, if, if she did get a call to answer it at the time, then she ain't seen it come through, but we could go to the next one to come. Oh, there it go.
Go, Ms. Smith.
Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Council, residents and everybody. First of all, I want to just give a shout out to the Beautification Committee. I really enjoyed myself and the team that I was working with on last Saturday when we went out to do our portion. So, and, and, and it, everything looked well to me. So I appreciate, um, Ms. Tony, Mr. Gabe, um, but I just want to come to you guys on behalf of the Western Wayne Family Health Center, Inkster Task Force, Inkster Chamber. And just say that we all do really need to support each other in whatever we are doing. Just to let you all know that the Inkster Task Force will be starting the farmer's market this Wednesday at two-seven-zero-two-zero, Michigan Avenue. Um, from four to seven, it will be every Wednesday until October. So I hope you guys can come out and support the city and, um, show up and purchase some things and be vendors if you need to be, you know, so that we can continue to work together and continue to beautify our city. That's all I have and I thank you.
Thank you. Uh, you know, Ms. Smith, I did, uh, send your email as it relates to making sure that, you know, we had all the vendor permits available, um, at the site. Um, and then, you know, people know how that they can become a vendor and they needed to come over to the city to get those applications through the city clerk office. Um, I didn't see your response to that. Would you like to respond now?
Oh, yes. Um, that should have been taken care of. It was, um, the, the person who's running the farmer's market. I did forward the email to her, so she, and she has started working on getting everything together. So that should have been going through today.
Okay, yeah, what I don't want to have happen is I know that it was a couple of years back that we had the eastern market here um, over at, um, South River in Inkster Road. And they were closed down by the city because they didn't have the proper vendor, um, stuff. And, um, folks have been coming to me, you know, saying that we were having that over at the, the Chase Building, which I'm, you know, I'm all for. I want to see people moving and grooving in the cities. But at the same time, you know, I know that, uh, it'll, we just don't want to, you know, make it seem like, you know, that we're not enforcing the rules with everybody.
Absolutely, absolutely, no problem.
Make sure whatever we need to get done, let's get that done. So we'll be all on the same page and know that we're looking forward to coming out on Wednesday and supporting every Wednesday all the way into October. So I'll see you out there this, this Wednesday.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. Let's do Confince Mendisa.
Hi, Council everyone. I just wanted to say, uh, you know, I was real thrilled to, to see and hear today's, you know, discussions and topics. Of course, you know, we have different people with different opinions, but everyone I think wants to see the city move forward. So even though it's a tough conversations, it's still progress. So I, I actually like that. And also, uh, the, the library, the little mini library, that just filled my heart. That's a great idea. I, I absolutely love that. And also the fact that we have so many people getting shots in the arms and people coming to each other's houses to do that. So that's just a blessing. Other cities don't have that. So that's something that we can be proud of.
Thank you, Confince. And as, if you guys don't know, um, Confince was brought forward by, um, Councilwoman Wiley as it relates to some risk management stuff. And he has been working with us and it continues to work with us pro bono. And we have some ideas that'll be coming before the council here within the next couple of council meetings that are pretty exciting as well. So, um, hopefully it'll be some cost savings and some things of that nature. So just wanted to just say publicly, thank you, Mr. Mendisa for, um, you know, just your community effort and, you know, your willingness to, to lend your expertise to the city of Inkster. All right, let's move forward. It is, uh, four-zero-four-three. And it was like a delayed response over there. Here we go.
Yeah, uh, good afternoon, uh, Mayor. Good evening, uh, Mayor at, uh, City Council and City of Inkster. I had, um, two questions.
Uh, state your name for the record for me, please, sir.
My name's Theron Allen.
All right, go ahead, sir.
I, I would like to, uh, the first question is on the land-owned property for the city of Inkster. I was looking on the website and it, it only has a list of property dating back to seventeen of twenty-twenty. Is there, is there a, a updated link or a, a data list of properties owned by the city?
Yeah, so that's our recent, that's our most current, um, you know, list. I know that a lot of people have been asking about the listing for foreclosures through the county. And, um, you know, the city has any homes available and all of that and, and all of that. However, we are at the process now where the treasurer from the county will, hopefully he'll be on the meeting next, our next meeting. And then after that, we can talk about, you know, the city, uh, for our first right of refusal program. We'll take on properties and then, you know, figure out how to, to best serve the community in that regard. So, um, as it stands up to date, that's the most updated list. You can, you know, also to check our website, we have, um, our city realtors listed there. And I'm sorry, Rebecca Daniels. Troy, I need Rebecca Daniels' information listed to that because we're gonna be bringing all of that, um, back to the council as it relates to adding those other, um, realtors in our community, giving them an opportunity to serve. So the council, of course, will approve that, um, as well. But I wanted to make sure that we have as much access to our city realtors as possible. So, um, we're just listing all of our city realtors, Curtis Dean Barge, Ernestine Williams, um, and all those folks that, you know, can help us with, um, you know, who and property. So I hope that answers your question. Um, look for, you know, to an updated list, uh, after, I would say closer probably to July. After July, we'll have an updated list of, of properties that the city didn't necessarily keep. And if you're, you're interested in our, um, our program as it relates to the NSP program, that information will be forthcoming as well.
So is it, is it, does the, um, I guess the offers or whatever is estimated through us to the council member or through the So is it, is it, does the, um, I guess the offers or whatever is estimated through us to the council member or through the realtor that's assigned on, on, on the, um, on that particular website?
Yeah, well, you can actually, yeah, that's the city realtor. Yeah, so that's what we ask for you to do. But if you need to get with one of your city council members that's in that district, you know, feel free to get them involved in the process. How, however, you know, we, we, we're trying to, again, streamline the process and should go through our city realtor.
All right. And, and, and I guess my, uh, last question is for the youth council representatives. How, I, I guess, how do, how, how is that, um, selection made? Or does that go through the city council representative?
Uh, you're selected. Um, but we, we want people to volunteer. We need people everywhere. So as it relates to, as being a volunteer overall, come into the city clerks, uh, come into the city hall. And we're open typically, uh, eight thirty AM to roughly four PM every day, Monday through Friday for now. Um, where you can come in and see the city clerk. They can give you an application. You can fill out there right there. Or I don't know, city clerk, do you have that application online as of yet as it relates to board and commission?
No, I'm sorry. I was talking about the, the youth, youth coun- youth council members.
That's, that's the same thing. That's a, they're, they'll become a new commission. Yeah. So you can get on, you say you do have that online, city clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that should be online.
Good. So you, you can go online and fill that out as well and, uh, submit that back to, to us and then get in touch with your council representative. Because in each district, we have a council appointee. So each council should have a person represented on the Parks and Rec Commission along with the mayor as well. So. Speak up, sir. You, you went away, sir. I'm sorry. I'm hearing a couple of chatters. What's that, Steve?
I don't know. There might have been some technical issues on the, on his end, cuz I think he just disappeared.
Yeah, okay.
Cuz he wasn't a four oh four three number, was he?
I don't know. That might have been a technical issue on the, on the day cuz I think he just disappeared.
Yeah, okay. Okay, yeah, they just, all, all of them just dropped off. Let's do the, and then just, you know, sir, please feel free to, to, to give us a call here at City Hall direct. Um, email us or any questions, comments, concerns. Come up and visit us. We'll be to get you that information. I hear somebody talking. Who was that talking? Is that Councilman Chisholm?
No, I believe that's Councilman Williams.
Yes, there's feedback coming from, uh, Councilman Williams.
He, he's on mute.
Yeah, I just muted him to stop the feedback.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Thank you, Troy. For you always on top of it. Wizard of Oz. We pull the curtain back. Good job. All right, let's see here. Say calling user one. All right. And guys, I'm sorry, lawsuit, uh, I, you know, I'm the chair. I have the gavel. I'm not gonna continue to put up with that stuff. If he has something valid to add to our discussion, let's go from there. And I know I gotta take certain things, but I'm gonna continue to take disruption in our city. Let's see here. Eight five two six. What about five four two oh? Did we get to that one, Steve? Last one, five four two oh. The eight five two six has been stuck.
Uh-oh, five four two oh had got it, but then it went back on mute.
Okay, they, they're up now. Five four two zero. State your name for the record, please.
Yvette Hardy.
How are you? Good evening.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Resident. Um, just thinking back on what you just said about enforcing the rules. Now with the H and H selling the property to a new metal scrapping company. They especially shame on him. He's an attorney. He has broke the rules. The rules, he violated some laws. Cuz we all know the first step is to submit an application for the change of ownership. The second step is to have an engineer to design a blueprint. Especially, he said that he's gonna make some upgrades. Third, he need to submit the blueprint to the planning department. Fourth step is to begin building, making improvements, and submitting it to the building and inspecting, inspection department where they can come in and inspect those upgrades. Then he submit license. And it sounds like to me when mayor, when, um, Pro Tim, Kim, Pro Kim had asked for, were they operating? The man said yes. Now, how is this metal company operating without a business license?
Yeah, that's, you know, I'm gonna tell you, you know, Yvette, and, and you've been through the process. Unfortunately, it needs to be changed. Um, you know what I'm saying? It publicly now that we will be bringing forth, um, amendments to the planning ordinance as it relates, I mean, I'm sorry, the ordinance as it relates to how we conduct our business. Um, we do have, you know, quite a few businesses in the city that have, you know, just negated the rules and it's open. You know, and I'm not saying that this particular company did that because I think it's a fine line that they were looking at as it relates to them buying the bill, buying the business and operating the business as it stands currently versus, um, you know, coming in and, you know, doing the changes or that they would need to do to, um, the actual facility. So, you know, the first thing when I heard that they had, um, you know, it came to my attention through the process of them asking for a license to add, um, a scrapping component to, um, this particular, um, piece of land. And, uh, my ex to clerk at the time, you know, is this H and H Metal. She said, no, this is a new company. And that's how it kinda came, that's how it came to our attention. And we have, we have had folks slip through the cracks. And we're working as much as we possibly can to, you know, get everyone in compliance in the city. You know, there's a lot of folks just unfortunately out of compliance. When it's a, so we're, we're looking to make sure that we do everything that we need to do properly is, you know, we're not out looking every day for private individuals that's doing business within our city. Um, this, like, buying new businesses or new property or whatever, we don't, that's not something that we're even capable of doing. We just don't have the manpower to do it. But when things are brought to our attention, or we just, we're out there with our code enforcement officers, of course, you as eyes and ears within the community, the people within the community bring things to our attention, then we go and we operate. But I think that, um, again, he's operating under the current person's license. Um, that's, uh, what's named through the state, that's, um, you know, uh, certified through the state. And then, of course, with the business license component now, because they're gonna be changing, um, their actual ownership in that, or they've already done that. On our desk, we will be sending them through the proper, you know, positioning in order to, to continue the work that they're doing. Plus, they're gonna have to go any commission and all of that stuff when they do any changes to the actual property itself.
Right, because right now it's looking like, you know, borderline disparity of treatment. And we don't want the city to get involved in some type of litigation on something. Number one, that man is a lawyer. He knows better. That's what I'm saying, Mayor. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not charging it to you or city council. I'm charging it to him. He knows better. Shame on him. That's where I'm at. Shame on him. He knows better. That's all I have, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, ma'am. And I will follow back.
Okay, thank you.
You're, you're welcome, ma'am. All right then, guys, let's get off into city clerk. What you got for us outside of sad news?
Yes, I was just gonna, um, say that, um, it's with a sense of sadness, but also with the thought of change, um, particularly the change in my life. Um, that, as, as all of you know, that I have announced my resignation with the city of Inxter effective May eleventh. It has been an absolute pleasure to serve as city clerk for the city of Inxter for nine years and to work for the residents of this great city, past and present mayors and city council members. It has been fulfilling to be able to work alongside three councils and be the individual that you relied on. One of my goals when I started as city clerk was to provide gold star administrative service while also providing safe, secure, competent, and ethical oversight of the election process. I hope that these values were visible through the service I provided the community over the years. I have had the opportunity to meet and work with endless number of wonderful people and employees. There are many individuals that should be thanked and acknowledged for their involvement and assistance over the years. Too many to mention in this letter. Hopefully, each of you will be able to recognize yourself as one of those individuals and will remember the time that you assisted me in the matter, knowing that I certainly did appreciate it and I wanna acknowledge it at this time. In the future, I have, um, let city council know that I'm here to assist them to make this transition as seamless as possible. I have also offered my services as a consultant, which this council will need to decide if, um, they would like to do for me to do their meeting um, for them and to help train and assist, um, another clerk that comes in. Although I no longer will be working for the city, I do live in Inxter and plan to remain active. This city has some of the most resilient and faithful residents. I wish the city of Inxter great future success. And again, thank you all for allowing me to serve. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council.
You're welcome. And you didn't say that, you know, you will be sticking around with us, so you will be on. You know, so I really appreciate you, city clerk, and everything that you've done. You know, of course, you know, we've known each other for quite a bit of time. I think right after I got off of council, you came on and, um, you've been, you've been stellar in the position. I really truly appreciate your service not only to your craft, but also to, to the people in our community. And I'm pretty sure that, uh, the council members doing their, um, their communication, they're gonna say the same thing. So thank you so much for your service and your continued service because you ain't done yet. We gonna point you somewhere. You, you live here, you know, so there's a difference. Okay? All right, let's, uh, city treasurer?
Um, I just wanna say real quick, thank you to everyone who participated in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget. Uh, study sessions, it's council, everyone from the public who watched, mayor, uh, Glenn Moran, everybody, all the department heads. Thank you for listening to everything we had to say for the EVP and the DM payroll. I was very excited that those went through today. I think we're going to get some, uh, get some good benefits out of that. You know, I mean, it should be a six-figure pickup, so I'm excited about that. Um, and then, as always, thank you to my team.
Yep. Vijay, thank you for everything that you guys are doing. I mean, I know that you've been busy. I know it's been stressful. I know we've been, you know, knocking and, but at the same time, I really appreciate you sticking in there and working it through. So thank you, man. Really appreciate you. All right, let's move right into, um, I'm, I'm sorry, council communication, mayor council communication. Um, see Reverend Williams, you sticking up now. You wanna, wanna go ahead? You got anything for us? You up now? You, you, you standing, you standing up now. You leaning back before you got.
First of all, you accused me, you, you were making a lot of noise and that, that wasn't me. Okay? That wa- that was not me. I was already muted. I, I heard that.
That wasn't you. We know. We sorry.
Okay, but, uh, yeah, accused me. But that's okay. I've been accused before. But, uh, let me start off by thinking all, thinking of all the residents, especially one of my district and, and people that pulled out at the beautification cleanup. You know, we had a ball. I mean, we, we did a lot, a lot of service in the area. We just had a good time. You understand? And, but as you look around the city and you went around the city, you can still say that District One is number one. When it came down to cleaning, did an excellent job. And, and so, uh, I was happy about that. We did a lot of, went around with, with the trailers and, so everything we seen, we just picked up and it was beautiful. And you know what? And, and, um, and the queen was out there, Queen Washington, she was out there, oh, well, looking good, you know, we had a good time. Brother Shaw, he came out, you know, and we just had a good time out there. But I hope next time, next month, that we all get out there and just, just have a ball, you know, the mayor. The mayor took the show. He tried to take the show, but he didn't, he didn't last long. But anyway, we still love him. Uh, to Felicia, you know, it's been a pleasure working with you and I just, I, I, I know you, you in Inxter, so we, we not go, you're not gonna be too far away from us. So, but I just want you to know it's been a pleasure working with you. And I, I wish you all, all, all of the blessings in your new job. You know, I just like to say that. And, um, that's all I have to say tonight, you know, and we just keep on loving one another, bonding each other together with love, unity, and strength. And I declare, we'll make Inxter what it should be. God bless you.
Nice. Councilman Washington?
Um, I would like to echo what, uh, Councilman Williams said. I really enjoyed, um, being out there, um, during the cleanup with him and a couple of, uh, council members, um, with, um, yourself, mayor, along with, uh, Councilman Shaw. And, um, we had Troy out there as well and just a couple of other city, um, employees as well. So that was really nice. And also, I would like to also, um, express my gratitude to, um, Felicia. We really appreciate your efforts that you've been putting in the workplace and, um, over the years, your professionalism. And you always had pride and hard work and dedication to the city of Inxter, and I wish you nothing but success in your future endeavors.
All right, Councilwoman Wiley?
Oh, I just wanna say bye, Felicia, and thank you.
Um, a lot of, a lot of, that was awesome.
What would you do without me?
That was awesome. I tell you, it was great. All right, Councilman too?
I'm about to suffocate over here from laughing so hard. No comments tonight. Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilman Shaw?
I just, I'm, I'm gonna keep it brief, uh, m- m- mister chair. I do want to also echo Ms. Felicia Lutlitz, our city clerk. Uh, ever since I got on council, she has been the same person um, that I have known down through the years. She has not changed. When she came in, I mean, she grew and, and done things better in her way, but she has never changed. Her personality has never changed. She has been the same person that when I first got on council and we, we was in the interview process and she came aboard. Uh, she has been that same person. So I just want to commend you, uh, for the things that you have done for this, for this council and when I was on council previous. Uh, keep, keep doing what you're doing. Keep your head up and you stay faithful to your game. Stay faithful to the, the things in which you do. Ever, you never missed the call that I have called you, text you. And I, and I, you know how I am. I depend greatly on you, uh, with the information that you have provided for me down through the years. Um, remain that same person, uh, Felicia. Remain that same person and don't lose that. You know, that's real. That's genuine there. And also, mister chair, I have, um, and I wanna encourage you also to, mister chair, to use that monthly report uh, that we are looking for every month so that the information, uh, that you need to communicate to the council that we will have that every month. We, we didn't have it this month, uh, but.
Yeah, it's, it's coming from the show. It's not, it's, uh, you didn't, you should have received the last month, right? So, so April, you got April, right?
No.
I owe them March. I know that.
You owe them March. Okay, so yeah, so I know that Rhonda was saying that the other day. So you haven't got March to him yet? Okay.
I got it on my counter.
All this other stuff and I apologize to Councilman Shaw. I'll take that up. And I know, thank you, Vijay, for jumping in there saying, you know, you're responsible too, but I appreciate that, Councilman Shaw.
Yeah, I just wanna encourage you to, to, to use that because that's a great tool to be able to communicate to the council. And also, um, police patrol on Oakland Street. And also, um, police patrol on Oakland Street, West Hill Street. And I just got two more things. Uh, the police in number, um, to remain anonymous, for citizens to call, we don't have that. We used to have it on the calendar. Uh, we don't have that now. So if we could somehow, uh, if the chief can get back with me to get us that, uh, anonymous tip line number so that people can call in anonymously. And also my last point is I wanna say Happy Mother's Day to all of the mothers, uh, all of our city employees. Happy Mother's Day to you all.
And Rhonda, we should have still in my shine, man. That was my day, that Mother's Day thing. That was a good one. Um, now, Mayor Pro Tim Howard, I think she had to jump off. Okay, all right then, just real, real quick for me, clerk interviews. Um, so you know, this is something that we have to do as a group, as a body. The clerk reports to the mayor and the council. So city clerk, uh, Rutledge has already sent some information out as it relates to, um, going through, uh, the actual, uh, folks as they come in for the interview process. However, um, listening to the council, I think the general consensus was that, you know, everybody wants to see all applicants that come in for the city clerk. And then this body, um, you know, works to dwindle it down to your top two. Um, so we need to talk about a process of how that works. So I know, you know, we did say we get a hundred applicants. You know, what I typically do is I ask, um, you know, HR person, which is Sue, to kinda go through those along with whoever corresponding with her, which would be the city clerk at this point, and dwindle it down to the top three most qualified applicants for, you know, me to review. However, this is the council's appointment. Um, so I know that the entire council wants to be involved in that, you know, has to be involved in that. So I don't know how you wanna move on. Do you want us, if, you want us to give you all the applications? Or we just give you, you know, again, what I, what I suggest is that, you know, we get them down to maybe our top ten, maybe? Then, you know, send them out to you guys and you can pick between the top ten?
I would like to see all the applications. I can, I can come in anytime. See them.
Okay then, so Felicia, why don't you work with, you know, work with the council to determine that, you know, and, and, you know, give every, all the applications, let them come in, see them, and then you guys.
And then what's the process to dwindle that down? That's what I think you're kinda asking. How do you, how does every, how does seven people come up with the top three people? You all gonna might ask someone different. So that's the thing.
You might be surprised.
Let's just get everybody to weigh in. I mean, we know we don't have a whole lot of time.
The devil's decision?
So we want everybody to weigh in. So what we'll do, let's do this, madam clerk, you know, again, once we close it and we bring all the applicants together, let's send all the applicants out and then say, hey, council, you have three days to give us your top ten or whatever it is. And then we can go from there.
Or you can do like a poll.
Yeah, there you go, something like that. Okay? But I know we had to talk about it today in this, in, in, in this setting, cause I know we have a couple more days to go. I'm also to, um, just for the general public, as it relates to speed bumps, we haven't forgot about the speed bumps. We just really, to be frank, we don't have the money. So what we're trying to do right now is, uh, go out, uh, Mr. Bivens and, and along with his staff have, um, written a grant for speed bumps. I believe Mr. Bivens, it says it, it went out, was going out today. Um, as it relates to that, I'm in the City of Inkster, the speed bumps were determined by the police department, uh, where they'll be located. However, in the meantime, we're gonna try to do some type of drive or fundraiser, GoFund. Something we gonna do, you know, Vijay's been talking about doing something as it relates to GoFundMe. Maybe this is the GoFundMe project for the City of Inkster as a whole. I don't know. However, we, we, you know, at the end of the day, we need your support to figure out how we, you know, get that done. Um, because, you know, just to be frank, you know, do everybody know? So let me say this. We've been trying to track a speeder up and down the Hazelwood Magnolia area, in that area. And we got video from our people, you know, from the community, no others individual. However, you know, high-speed chases aren't, and, you know, something that the police, you know, have, they, they engage in just right off. So if they get onto, like, say a person in a charger and they speed off, you know, typically our officers are not pursuing them unless it's a matter of life and death. So we gotta catch these people in the act. You can help us catch these people by videoing them, taking pictures of their, what the address they went to, the actual, you know, the, the license plate number, you know, we, we have to do our part within the community, neighborhood watching, all community, all eyes on this issue. Um, we're gonna put up signs where we can, slow down, children in the area, you know? But we need for you all to start taking control of your areas, formulating those block clubs, getting out, walking through the neighborhood, riding your bikes through the neighborhood, put, get your cars together. We work with auxiliary, put some signs on you, put a s- signal on top of your, uh, vehicle, you know? We gotta start engaging that piece of it. So we're working to do our best on that. The next beautification day, what's the, what's the date? I should know that.
Saturday in May.
What is it?
Four Saturday in May. No, she moved it up to the twenty something.
Was it twenty second?
I thought it was twenty second.
Yeah, the twenty second. Cause I think they moved it up.
May the twenty second. Okay, and, and Councilman Williams has been talking a lot of smack about how number one is the best district and how it looks. All that. I say that each council member, we come together and we, we put on a competition and I wanna do the Inkster City makeover and see who can bring out the most volunteers on that day. And, you know, we, we get off into our different areas and then we have, you know, maybe like some judges that go around and see what we doing within our areas, bring the picnic, you know, feel to it and, you know, everybody's have a staging area within their own district and we just make it into a city-wide versus each other cleanup, because that's our whole push. Clean, safe, accessible. I believe cleanliness is next to godliness and it takes us up to a whole nother level. All right, so that's that. Um, Councilman Shaw stole my thunder a little bit on Happy Mother's Day, but I think, hey, the more we love, we get the, get the mothers, the better. So it is what it is. Happy Mother's Day to, to all our mothers. And I believe on that same date, and, and council, I'm sorry, and, um, madam clerk, the blessings of the bikes, is that Sunday as well too, right?
Yes.
Okay, and it's gonna be on the.
Inkster High Fairgrounds, yes. And it's from ten to six, I believe.
They gave you everything that you needed. You got the insurance documents.
I'm still waiting on that one portion of it. The insurance portion of it, I'm still waiting on that part.
Okay, Mr. Pritchard, you're on the line. You heard that. So I need that from you and I'll get with you tomorrow just to follow up, to make sure we have all that stuff. But, uh, we know that COVID is still a pre, uh, i- i- is, is, you know what I'm trying to say. It's, it's still in the front, it's still in the forefront. So we gotta make sure that we masking up, we social distancing, doing the things that we need to do. We know it's warming up, so we're gonna have a lot of other social gatherings. So just wanna make sure that we out and, and, and we're supporting each other. Like Octavia said earlier, we wanna support everything that we're doing in Inkster, all of us supporting each other. That's what we have to do. That's the only way that the City of Inkster is really gonna make that turn. We gotta support one another. You know, no matter what it is, you know, talk about it, put it out there, deal with it and support one another because Inkster is all of our home. All right, I know that we have, uh, do we have Mr. Jones, Attorney Jones? What do we have for closed session?
We do have one item, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if he's on me.
There he is. Okay.
Yes, we do have one closed session item. It's the Horn case. H O R N E. Can you please let John Nader, who was from our office in the breakout room, please?
All right. What's your pleasure?
So move, mister chair, to go in the closed session.
Support.
Remove the supported roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiley? Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Howard, is she off the line?
Yes.
Okay, Council, Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams. We have five yays, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion going to closed session. I'll just so you all know that, uh, we're going in the closed session right now. Of course, we have to come back out and, and adjourn anything that we do in closed session. If we do any action, we'll be, then, then we'll come out and adjourn, so. For it says, my just probably just said broadcasting message to all, close all rooms. I didn't get a breakout invitation. All right, I think everybody's back out. All right, Councilwoman Wiley?
Yes, I'd make a motion that we vote in accordance with the, uh, closed session decision. Do I need to offer any more than that?
The name Horn.
Okay, uh, regarding Horn.
Support.
Move the properly supported roll call, please, city clerk.
Yes, Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams. Remember Williams?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, we have five yays.
All right, motion carry. Moving right along. Motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
The support? All the favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, have a good rest of your evening. Thank you guys for your patience.
Thanks.
Have a good night. Thank you all.